Okay.
Call to order a work session for the town of Normal for Monday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. And could we turn that down a little bit? Please call and roll.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. Nord.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Cummings.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Uh, we have no public comment for this one, so we'll proceed right to the business at hand. And that is a presentation by Ray Li and Jennifer Six for McLean County Regional Planning Commission on the Go Safe McLean County Program. So come right up and jump right in.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to share with you this very important project called Go Safe. It basically is for transportation safety. And this planning process that took place actually happened all during the pandemic, you can imagine. So it has been kind of unconventional type of planning process. And the plan was adopted by the Regional Planning Commission just a couple of months ago in April. And the name Go Safe Action Plan actually is be branded from Vision Zero, which is an international movement on traffic safety that started in nineteen ninety-seven in Sweden. So a long way, but it has actually has come have crossed the oceans and come to the U.S. And if you go to their website, you'll see different cities in the whole country that you belong to this Vision Zero network. And for the sale, Illinois, Chicago, city of Chicago is the only one that we saw on the map. So we're trying to go and apply for to become a member of that network after fulfilling certain requirements. And hopefully our area will be the second one on that map. Uh, here with me, Jennifer Six, our senior transportation planner from the Regional Planning Commission staff. And this whole project is, uh, was granted through a grant by I-DOT, Illinois Department of Transportation. And the whole process took about a year with a kickoff back in June of twenty twenty. And I am going to show you the steps, but I'm not going to go like every little detail for the sake of time. But back in June of twenty twenty, that's when the kickoff meeting took place. But even prior to that, as you can imagine, there was all discussion, planning of the whole process applied to that kickoff meeting. Besides the, the planning staff for the Regional Planning Commission, actually, we, there was a project steering committee that make up of members from the communities, different sectors, from the universities and the also the business sectors and free revised sectors. They, along with the panel of subject matter experts, make up of staff, planning, engineering, public work staff from all the three governmental entities, including those of the town of Normal, and also others, you know, from the police department, from county health, to school districts, to the connect transit, as well as Economic Development Council. So we need a whole host of folks helping to work on this planning process in devoting their time and effort in studying, educating themselves, and trying to get the best case studies and apply to our planning process in this area. And we were also assisted by consultant, is a local consultant, but actually they do work all over the country. It's a high group, which you may or may not be familiar with them. With us, Jonathan Statham is with us with the high group. And they have also sub consultants helping on the graphic design. But, but all these folks actually just worked together for many months on this project. And so after they put some draft together, there were opportunities for the public to provide comments. Because the pandemic, there were meetings held virtually, we call community conversations back in March of twenty twenty and, uh, actually twenty twenty-one, that's probably desert type of thing. And then with topics that would be shared and participations, you know, by members of the community. And we considered those comments and incorporate those as part of the final draft plan that was be sent to the Regional Planning Commission for its adoption. In April twenty twenty-one, the plan after consideration by the Regional Planning Commission was adopted. And so that's kind of the process, as I said, it took about a year, a little less, for that planning process to take place. And I said, as I said earlier, we had a lot of people working this, this point together and providing experts and their own experience or their knowledge, expertise, with assistance by consultants and also the sub consultants. If I may point out to Fire Bank Co-op, which is a sub consultants on the, on the branding, actually they got an award and we know to us after the plan was adopted, they got the twenty twenty-one. It's a national award on graphic design. And so we got noticed that they got the twenty-one. It's amazing. So, but just to stop, it's very competitive too. Even I think there's like over a thousand entries even for that. But just to stop, it's not just the content, but the graphic design makes a difference to convey the message of traffic safety to our community and the others. And it's well recognized by them. So today, um, I'm just, you know, with the introduction, brief introduction I just provided, I'm going to touch upon priorities with this plan, the core principles that were taken into considerations, and also the data, which I'm not going to go into detail because you can read up in the reporting, I don't want to bore you with all numbers tonight. And then the target and timeline for this planning, adopt the plan really what's after work, right? And then Ms. Six will go into the strategies and accommodations contained in the plan. Basically, there are three major areas. Infrastructure, data, research and technology, and also community culture change. So when we talk about traffic safety, it's not just roads, it's not just bridges, it's not just pedestrian lights. A lot of times it's the culture, it's a lot of technology, data behind all this work. So ensure go into that with a little more detail. The seven years, for the seven priorities. Equity, education, enforcement, engineering, evaluation, environmental stewardship, economic impact. And so those are the seven priorities that's been indulged or involved in this whole mentality of creating this plan. It's hard to read on this slide, but I would just point out that those are core principles. Just point those out for your reference. Traffic deaths are preventable and unacceptable. Human life is our highest priority. And the human error is inevitable and predictable, but a lot of time is how we design the transportation system that makes a difference to anticipate those human errors and to avoid those errors. Safe human behavior, education and traffic safety enforcement are essential contributions to a safe transportation system. So it takes more than just like passing out speeding tickets. This is more that I love in, in terms of the principles. And also, uh, we, a lot of times the, the crash injuries that impact by the speed, and so the speed limit and other things related to that affect how the human lives are impacted with, unfortunately, sometimes injuries do happen. So the target and timeline of this plan is by twenty thirty, it's zero. That's what I was referencing, Vision Zero is that zero. It's the big zero fatalities or life-changing injuries for any traffic-related incidents by twenty thirty. It seems like a lot, a long time, but it's not. It takes time for human behavior to, to, to change. It takes time for the whole community to, to work together in a comprehensive way so that we can achieve that goal. But let us start. And with that, I'll have Ms. Six to go into a little bit more detail in terms of the recommendations and strategies that are included in the plan.
Thank you, Ray. Good evening, everyone. As you can, I'm sure, understand, we took the, the steering committee and the high group made some decisions about the information we had available to us and then came up with the categories that Ray mentioned earlier. It's a transportation-focused issue, so actually we start with infrastructure. And there are really sort of three concepts that wind through everything on this page. The first is the use of our complete streets policy, the towns with complete streets policy, and those of other local governments. And that's to use those policies and use them to practice a consistent approach.
Excuse me, Jennifer, sorry to interrupt. Could you talk into the microphone a little bit more, please? Thank you.
Okay. Is that better? Sue told me I didn't have to leave, but apparently I do. Okay, so first is our complete streets policies, again, putting them to work and sort of incentivizing, using them to incentivize infrastructure management for safety. Second is attention to alternate modes of transportation, which are not always recognized on our roadways. Although Normal has made steps in this direction, there's more that can be done and will be done. And finally, a concentration on safe transportation options, not just one, but several for vulnerable or disadvantaged people in the community. And that could run the gamut from older people to people with disabilities to a whole range of people who have difficulty maneuvering through our transportation system. These are tools we already have. So putting these to work is really just a logical extension of reaching these goals. Okay. We mentioned the complete streets. This map, and I have to tell you, the lines on the map are in different colors and that means absolutely nothing. This was drawn from an earlier MCRPC study on complete streets and proceeding are, are starting on the Vision Zero or Go Safe Action Plan. Part of what this means is, you know, here's what's been established in an earlier process. We're taking this on board. In some cases, these things have already been addressed. But the idea is to use this as a jumping off point for an ongoing inventory of streets that need attention, that need a complete streets review, or that have known safety issues. We're going to be helped in this by the existence of a brand new or pretty new McLean County Local Roads Street Plan. So that's coming from a project with I-DOT that involve the county engineers around the state and, and for us, the staff on the county hallway and others' participation from both Bloomington and Normal in that project. And that's going to give us some guidance on how to categorize and look at potential crash locations that we need to, to pay attention to, kind of with the assistance of local, you know, engineering staff, traffic engineers and so on, to determine where the priorities really are. If there's, you know, is this an infrastructure problem? Is it something else? How do we address it? Okay. Next category is really three categories, data, research and technology, but they all kind of fall under a, an information sort of rubric. And as it says here, you know, each day, about eighty people in the United States are killed in crashes. It seems like a low number considering the size of the country. But if you look at our own records here, Bloomington, Normal, you know, we've come to that in a year and sometimes more than that. And a clear theme throughout this planning process has been that basically human beings are the weak link in the system. And part of our process is to figure out how do we go about looking at the behavior of people using the system in order to create a more safe culture, which we'll get to later. For some reason, a lot of focus came into micro mobility, and I'll talk about that in a minute. So data recommendations. Really, to be effective at this process, we need more data from multiple sources. We need to be able to compare data from different sources to determine essentially its viability. We need to look at ways in which emerging transportation technologies and data management reform can contribute to answering our questions about how well the system works and looking at where the potential difficult spots may be that we have to prioritize in that earlier process I mentioned. And to do all of this as transparently as possible in terms of data sourcing, but also in terms of making sure that they, you know, everything's been anonymized, nobody can be identified, to the extent that when we're using local information, that's particularly important because we're all here and people need to feel confident that we're treating appropriately and safely in terms of their information. The next part of this, this trio is research recommendations. And this is interesting, Ray. Our community is rich in information and the analytic talent we need to, to use it effectively. Tapping those resources, people we know about, the, the information that's held by some of our corporate friends, the public health department, the hospitals and so on, will help us look at and understand more of what we need to do, how we need to approach it, what kind of research and other activities will lead us to better answers. And of course, to aid us in the thoughtful, careful implementation of new technology, both in the transportation systems and in data security. Thank you, Ray, for reminding me about moving the screen. Finally, next trio, technology recommendations. And this is where, for some reason, micro mobility kind of took the forefront. And that basically consists of small-scale transportation devices like the motorized scooters you may have seen around. There are a number of ways for these things to be incorporated into the system. We have to look at them carefully to see how they can be incorporated safely so that people understand that they're there. And, you know, this may be something that comes out of our experiences with ISU and to some extent, rest of the country. But in any event, I think that this is a category in terms of technology that will expand as we move on in time and discover that there are endless new technologies coming into play that we need to assess and, and look at in terms of how they function or would function here. And also look for opportunities to test new technologies. There's some discussion with the state about this, with Rivian opening up. That's going to be another sort of angle and approach. But we seem like the ideal location to do that. And finally, and this is the interesting and tricky one, because this is community culture change. And as I'm sure you all know, because you work intensively with the community. Oh, thank you. I didn't quite catch it. You know, this is, this is a critical element of this entire process. So two traps here. One is the actual program itself, launching and expanding the initiative, Go Safe, and all of the ways we can think of to distribute it and describe it and help people to understand it. And then using all of the tools that are available here that we already have and that we can develop through this process as we continue to educate people about safety and moving to safe behavior. Julie Hott from the high group has a description of this that I find sort of compelling because it was a problem I had. And she said, this is the process of convincing people that rather than racing to, to go through a yellow light and maybe making it, but maybe not, that, that their impulse becomes slowed down when they see a yellow light so that they're not trying to charge across the intersection, whether it's safe or not. Guilty as charged. And I have been making it sound separate not to do that. So it's lots and lots of small steps by individuals as well as larger pictures having to do with, you know, infrastructure and data management and all of those things. And that will be our ongoing work as this process moves forward and we consider all the ways in which we can put it to work and help keep the community safe. Yes, here we go. So there are a lot of ways that, that go safe as concept and as a practice and as a program can find their way in the communities, large and small. We have examples here of, you know, whether it's an agency like Lifestyle or Free Action or a large institution like ISU or the town of Normal. This is sort of a list of ways in which we can branch out. One of them that was developed with the high group was the idea of a pledge. You know, here's what I'm going to do to be part of this Go Safe process. And, you know, not being a distracted driver or not allowing yourself to be pulled away from watching what's around you and taking care of traffic. And that's, again, the idea of the human element, which is so important and so critical in a lot of these crashing occurrences, is something we have to tackle as a part of this process. And I will, without turning back over the mic.
Thank you, Jane. Just as examples of those public committee conversations that I mentioned earlier, just some notes from that, just you can see there's really, we're just so grateful a lot of members from the public, they provide feedback on the draft and ideas and those were taken into consideration. With the project website on the left-hand corner, if you're interested to go into further, to read the plan document and also appendixes, that's available, mcplan.org/go-safe. More information, we, while the plan has been adopted by the Regional Planning Commission, as you can see, the plan takes more than the, the planning commission to, to implement. And we don't want to see the plan just sitting on the shelf. It's just such an important planning document, but with real critical implementation, strategies and recommendations. And so it's a committed by efforts to, to really to make our community, our whole area, really a safe area, whether it's for visitors, for residents, for business people, when people commute to work every day from outside this area, it is so important. And as I always say, traffic safety, the issue doesn't start at like city limits, county limits, your county limit. It's we, if the traffic goes, you know, different directions, we just want to make sure it's safe for everyone. So this was just our brief overview. Hopefully that's given idea and what, you know, we spent time and just like us and really many people are experts and public members who participate in the process and members of your council also participated during the, the planning process. So if any questions, comments, we would, you know, love to hear those and just how we can make this committee even safer.
Um, I'll start with a couple of questions. The first one is, the data you presented tonight, this is all on, on your website. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, the, the plan document and has, has the data, you know, in terms of the, the crash numbers and.
Is this overview PowerPoint on there?
This PowerPoint, yeah, we can put it or we can send it to the city manager and she can pass on to the members.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to do that.
Yeah, definitely.
And one thing, you know, and it might come under distracted driving, but I didn't, I didn't see any reference to substance abuse issues.
It, it's in the list. And it's, interestingly, the state of Illinois has been working on a similar process for the last two or three years. And they have focused very heavily on distracted driving, seeing it as the primary cause now of most of the crashes that they deal with directly or that they receive information about. And considering what, what we see around town, just, you know, with people with cell phones in their ears and all the rest of it, when they know that they're not supposed to do that, it has become a serious issue. I think that, you know, impaired driving, which is to say a substance abuse issue that has taken place behind the wheel, is, is very much a, a part of that same consideration. It's just a question of how widespread it is. You know, people have gotten the message, we hope, about drunk driving, not entirely. But people who are not paying attention at all, not because they're not sober or in any other way distracted, are the problem. That's, that distraction is really the issue now. But we, we cover all of that and that would all be part of the ongoing effort to sort of, again, that community culture change that we talk about at the end of the plan.
Further questions? Ms. Smith and Mr. Nord.
Will there be someone within regional planning that will take ownership of this program to monitor it going forward so that the message continues to be disseminated? I know at Festival ISU, hopefully that'll happen again this year, you're dealing with an ever-changing population of students that, um, there's a lot of frogger that happens around campus at the beginning of the semester. And, and so the need to reach evolving populations would be something. So is, is there going to be accountability and responsibility where this lies at, at, at your organization and one person is seeing that the message consistently is delivered where needed?
If I may answer that question, that's our hope and plan. But as part of what we're doing today, or what we're doing today as part of what we've been trying to do similar with other like governmental entities, that, yes, because it's a regional issue, to be honest, it's not just like a certain pocket of areas, that I think ideally, it, it does make sense for the regional planning staff to coordinate. But it takes effort, you know, from talking with the universities to school districts, educate the kids when they was little, or even other governmental entities, the police and everybody, basically. It, it, but we're trying to get a sense, you know, from the different governmental entities, if that's the approach they would like us to take. And, and we can then work with the city manager's office and see how, you know, that can be, can be done. But if, any feedback, anything, or city manager if any comments. But we, if there's no objections, you know, from any of the governmental entities, you will, will, will make it work because it does make sense. And usually for effort like this, it takes a governmental kind of public, if you will, sector to, to do the coordination by working with the private sectors and nonprofits and, and everybody else. That's our intention. But we're trying to educate, if you will, about the plan so everybody on the same page before we, you know, take the next step.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. A couple of questions. Is Normal not safe? I mean, what's the metric that we're trying to address? And what, like, the metric that's going to measure whether this was successful or not? What's the, what's the issue?
I think, Eddie, and I feel free to, to chime in too. If, I think the police department here can, can give some, some data. I think it's, how we make it safer to zero, I, I can tell you it's not zero. The number is not zero, injuries or anything like that. So really, that's the goal is to, for everybody. And so it's not, the town is not safe, but I can tell you it's not down to zero in, in terms of fatalities and also in terms of major injuries. And so our goal is really for everybody. It's for our families, our neighbors, friends. And so it is the, how to make everybody feel safe to, 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 you know, not worrying about, you know, got hit by a car or, you know, some students, you're trying to cross the street. So I think it's, we all know accidents happen, as we pointed out earlier, sometimes inevitable. We try to bring it down so that everybody don't have to worry about any fatalities.
Okay. I would like to request that you provide the metric that we're supposed to be keeping an eye on so we can see.
Oh, yeah, for outcome measurement.
What actually goes down.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's our goal to zero. So whatever the number is today, is to bring, to bring that down to zero. And that's what will be one of, actually, seeing the report in terms of the outcome measurements, that's what the data that Ms. Six was referring to. So that we can compare, really, that's just one of the tools to compare how, how, as we progress toward twenty thirty, are the numbers, you know, decreasing.
Sure. And then. And then the municipalities that have used this, have they been successful in getting down to zero? Do we have a municipality we're in a model off of?
This is still fairly new for the U.S., came across from Sweden. I think a lot, and I know you have done some research, and feel free to add to my comments, not there yet, but a lot of committees, different sizes, have participated in this effort. It's, some are working, but I, since it's still relatively new, although when it started in 1997 in Scandinavian country, but in the U.S. it's still fairly new, how is it working? That's what we're trying to do is lessons learned from other communities, how to make it successful. Yeah, so that's our, our goal to make it safer. I don't think anybody can argue that we, you know, to make any place a safer place to live.
Sure. A lot of the things you mentioned seem like they're kind of the responsibility of the state for the DMV with like driving rules, laws, things like that, because we don't create laws statewide for how people should drive, you know, distracted driving, things like that, you know, so it seems like some of this is something that the state should be doing, not starting local.
It's a combination, if, if you will. Yes, there's some state highways, they set the limits, but also there are local roles, you know, the cities, you do set limits. And also in terms of enforcement, yes, that's part of the role of the government through the enforcement, but there's other cultural changes, behavioral changes, that it takes individual efforts to make that happen.
Sure. My last comment is, throughout the presentation, a lot of the points had to do with public transportation and trying to get people to ride buses and things like that, and the consultancy company that you have, the owner happens to be on Connect Transit. I've had folks ask, how is this not a conflict of interest? You know, does this company have experience doing Vision Zero and no one else had it? Or, you know, what is that? You don't have to answer to me right now, but I just want you to know that I'm getting questions from the public, the folks that are paying for this, you know, how is this not a conflict of interest? And it's not my job to decide, just to relay what I hear.
Yeah, understood.
If I could respond to that, I believe when you raised that issue, when we, a couple meetings ago, council authorized the annual service agreement or renewed the service agreement between the town and McLean County Regional Planning, I believe, Mr. Nord, you raised that issue, and I believe it was addressed by Mr. Day, and he indicated that there was no conflict, but I can ask Mr. Day to summarize that again for you, if that, if that would be useful.
Well, I'm not looking for legal conflict, I'm looking for ethical conflict, which is very different from legal, but this is MCRP's decision, not Town of Normal's decision.
Like the Regional Planning Commission.
Could you define an ethical conflict?
What's that?
Could you define an ethical conflict? I'm not quite sure what you mean by that.
And I do want to, I'm sorry to jump in, Mayor, I do want to point out that the Howe Group does have expertise in safety and transportation safety, and I believe that is why they were selected by McLean County Regional Planning. Again, I believe that was explained previously.
Instead of explaining it now, I think what would be best is I can share an article from the ICMA on, with, with the entire council about the difference between what's legal and what's ethical. This was something that was just emailed to the municipal managers here, I believe, last month, an article.
Okay.
So I'll share that because that's more explains what it is.
Right, and I'm an ICMA member, I don't believe McLean County Regional Planning Commission is a member of ICMA, so I'm not sure the connection there, but we can certainly talk offline.
Oh, well, yeah, because it just shows, it, it explains the difference between legal and ethical, and how what's legal may not be ethical, and that's where I'm coming from, is ethical, not legal.
Mr. Nord, may I make one comment with respect to the issue you just raised?
Sure.
I think it's a misreading of the document or a misunderstanding of the document to characterize it as being oriented towards transit. It addresses, yes, there are pictures of buses, because buses are, you know, big and cute, but it also talks about other modes, and as I said earlier on, in terms of infrastructure, part of what we're looking at is making infrastructure not just safe, but available to people who currently don't have a lot of options. That includes people who are walking or bicycling or using a wheelchair, whether, you know, for whatever set of circumstances, some of them will never use transit, but they still will benefit from this approach. And there is a certain understanding that in, in safety terms, you're safer on a bus than you probably are in your own car, especially in traffic. So all of those issues are raised in this plan and will be considered as we move into an ongoing process of looking for ways to improve and ultimately looking for ways to make sure as far as we can that nobody dies on our streets.
Sure. And it wasn't the merits of the program, it was just in the presentation, the steering committee, the SME, it's all Connect Transit up there heavily, you know, so they're helping steer, which then could potentially steer consultancy work, and that's, that's the conflict. But thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. McCarthy?
Sure. First, thanks for making time to come and share the program with us. A wonderful program. I don't know that, although Vision Zero, vaguely familiar and did go to the plan and download the plan and had a chance to look it over before here. But in terms of benchmark and community safety, I don't think the community probably has to look too far back in history to remember Elani Lobdell, who was killed at Vernon and Grandview while running across the street by a young person in a car distracted. Also, we have a local permanent business owner that was on a bicycle and was run over as well. None of those had to do with transit, Connect Transit or buses or anything like that, and the majority of this is to try to keep people safe on a roadway. Obviously, those are pretty serious and pretty large and made the media and the newspapers and the like, but there's plenty that goes minorly reported or minimally reported. Almost every week in our community, those types of things happen, and so whether we get to zero or not, I don't know, is probably our intent, but if we reduce those things, hopefully, in a program like this, that's multi-pronged, I'm so very excited about. As we all know, well, maybe, maybe we don't all know, but bicycle sales is on the rise, non-motorized transit nationally is on the rise, communities that embrace that are attracting young people, and so I see this as an economic development initiative. Our community and others that focus on pedestrian and multimodal safety are going to frankly attract the workforce of the future. Happened to run into a young person that moved here from Los Angeles about three weeks ago here, recruited for Rivian, was, the three things he mentioned, didn't notice, the three things he mentioned was transit system and Constitution Trail, and of course, how cheap it is to buy a house here versus in L.A. So for those who think our housing prices are, are high, apparently we are much, much, much cheaper than Los Angeles. But that's an example of why a program like this is so important, when we have a 22-year-old who's moving here from what we all would consider a very desirable place, or many would consider to be a desirable place.
Not me.
Praising, yeah, not me, I don't want to live in L.A. either, but, but praising us for two things that touch exactly on, on what this is about. So thanks for spearheading this, thanks for bringing this to the community, and hopefully we can, can at least move in the direction of zero, whether or not we actually get there, but I think a safer community with fewer fatalities and fewer incidences is a, is a great effort, and I really appreciate your work on that.
Thank you for the comments. Just wanted to add one thing, just came to my mind that a lot of times we, we know friends, families were in accidents and whatnot, one life saved, one less injuries, that's all makes, I mean, that's worth it. That's all I want to say.
Well, thank you for the presentation tonight. I think you can count on Town of Normal to be an enthusiastic and dedicated partner to this program.
Thank you.
It totally makes sense in what Mr. McCarthy said, you know, you've got to have goals and, and zero is a good goal to have, and, you know, a good one to move to. Whether we get there or not, it's not from lack of trying.
Keep trying to, take, take everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're going to adjourn the work session here for about five to seven minutes, and we'll be back for a council meeting.
And we are not having liquor permission.
Right. I already told everybody. Okay.
Yes.
Wow. Yeah, you know what, it's amazing though, I mean, I think sometimes when I'm fifteen, no one knows where, you know, just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
I think September.
I know, yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
But it's interesting to see.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
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 Do you know James Spurrier?
Yes, yes.
She is before the hand.
She knows, she knows.
I believe so.
She wants to talk about traffic.
No, I get it.
But you don't know her?
No.
Colonel Seck.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
I thought this was.
Oops, I'm not the mayor.
That's all right.
Sorry.
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 No, I get it.
But you don't.
No.
Carl Seela.
Oh. Oh, 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 okay. I thought this was.
Oops, I'm not the mayor.
It's all right. Sit one up.
Well, he's all right. I'll refill while I can.
Call the order of a meeting for the Normal Town Council for Monday, July 19th, 2021.
Your microphone's not on, Mayor.
It is on.
Didn't really seem to have much. I don't think anybody's on. None of them are on.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss?
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Cummings?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
We'll begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a number of speakers tonight for public comment. So we'll, we'll begin with that. The first speaker is Mark Peterson. Again, as a reminder, we just asked you to state your name for the record and limited to three minutes of public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark Peterson. P.E.T.E.R.S.O.N. I, uh, it's nice to be back here. It's been a while, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about a, an issue. I think it's item seven on your agenda, commonly referred to as the Underpass Project. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight represents a defining moment for you and for the history of Normal, and that's why I'm here. As an elected official, you're presented over the course of your tenure with occasional important policy decisions that I consider to be defining moments. Some in the past, just some examples, might be Diamond Star Motors back in the mid eighties, Constitution Trail. I was here for Con- the first vote on Constitution Trail, which incidentally almost didn't happen, believe it or not. The Uptown Marriott would be an example and more recently, and some of you were involved in this, and it's Rivian Automotive. These are important policy decisions that oftentimes were somewhat controversial, involved an element of risk, sometimes public investment. And in those cases, based upon my experience, I learned over the years, having a front row seat, watching city councils deal with these kinds of transformational decisions, these, what I call defining moments, I learned that the easy, the easy vote is no. The easy vote is no. That means no risk, no effort, no accountability, no public investment. You're done. The hard vote is yes. And Normal has, I think, a history, a tradition, if you will, of not only this council, but previous councils in recent history of taking the hard path and voting yes and choosing to see the opportunity when it's presented and to make things happen. Now, I'm also here to tell you all congratulations. I'm, I'm so impressed with the funding partnerships, the, the assemblage of partners that you've been able to pull together over the past couple of years. This project was actually conceived when I was city manager, but Pam and her team have done all the heavy lifting. My gosh, you got 93% external funding, leaving a, a local match on a $24 million project of 1.7 million. That's unheard of, folks. That is incredible. Congratulations. And what it shows is you've got this, this incredible group of funding and supportive partners that believe in this project, but they also believe in the town of Normal. They believe and they know that the town of Normal will deliver. And it's because this community, this town council and this organization has a track record, track record of delivery. So this is your defining moment tonight, and this is an opportunity for you all to make history. And it's an opportunity for you to exercise vision, leadership and courage in taking the hard path that will lead to what I think is a very, very successful project that will benefit our community for many years to come. So congratulations on getting it this far, and I wish you the best of luck, and, and I'll be available to assist in any way that I can, but I'll be watching it closely. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to share these comments with you this evening. Good luck.
Our next speaker is Paul Harmon.
Good evening, I'm Paul Harmon, town of Normal, a former member of this august body before any of you were. I'm going to read my comments because I have things I want to specifically say, and I don't want to, uh, miss them, so I, I will just be reading. Controversy is nothing new, but because we have representative and not direct government, it is up to the representatives, I mean, the town council, to ignore the chatter and make decisions in the long-term best interest of the community. Therefore, I want to mention just a few of the controversial decisions the town made when I was mayor. The biggest, of course, was Diamond Star and the incentive package in today's dollars of $20 million, five times that of Rivian's, plus all of the infrastructure had to be created, including the building of West College Avenue. This whole project dominated the news. The naysayers were loud and the anti-Japanese comments were hateful. And without this project, however, there would be no Rivian. In 1985, the town purchased from the private owner of the water slide in Fairview Park at the price in today's dollars of $758,000. What a boondoggle, said the naysayers. The slide was a success and when removed because of age, the corner pool area was created. Also, in 1985, the town purchased the six acres on Linden, which now houses the County Link Amphitheater, parking at Seven. In today's numbers, the purchase price was $1 million. The town is being robbed, the price is inflated, so, said the naysayers, including the demographic editor to my face and in my office. That six acres has, over the years, been productively used by the town. I mentioned the water slide and the six acres because the price today of those projects would be $1,758,000, about the price of the Underpass as far as the town of Normal is concerned. That Constitution Trail was opposed because it would be used, it would not be used, and every house on the trail would be burglarized. I knew it was boondoggle because it was too far away, a golf course wasn't needed, and nobody could buy how- would buy houses on the interstate. The Twanda Avenue Bridge over the railroad tracks was bridged to nowhere and cost too much, even though staff went out and found the dollars from external funding sources, just like the Underpass. Can you today think of not having the Twanda Avenue Bridge? The Underpass can very well be the bridge to the areas south of the tracks and lead to the future development, but immediately the Underpass is needed for Amtrak for those with mobility issues, older users, and in bad weather for everyone. The current access between the two stations is totally unacceptable. It is needed by the Children's Museum to improve group access. It is needed for the Constitution Trail, and above all, it is needed for safety. It is unconscionable to think anyone would turn down grant funding that will pay 93% of the cost of this project, which will immediately benefit thousands of people heading away. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patrick Coben.
Good evening. Patrick Coben, I'm the CEO of the Blue Lakes Normal Economic Development Council. It's good to see everyone in person again. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the Underpass and really the economic impact of an Underpass and what it means to our community. As most of you know, we always talk about having an economic development flywheel, and the flywheel really focuses on three different areas. We've got the resources we'd like to develop, we like to develop our businesses, and hopefully if we do that right, then we get investment back in our community. The goal of the investment back in the community is that it gets put right back into the flywheel and starts all over, developing right back into the resources. Number one on our list is our infrastructure. The Underpass does address infrastructure. It is a safety issue. It's been a couple of years since I was a student at IHU, but I can tell you that I didn't always cross the tracks appropriately. This will be a nice way to repave that. Our next issue is light elimination. Uptown Normal is gorgeous, but if you go out a little bit, there's a little bit of light. And this is an opportunity to open up development on the other side of the tracks. I believe there's an empty Amtrak station over there that could probably have better use, along with underutilized parking lot. The next item is beautification. Beautification is not something that our organization focuses on. That's really what the town and the city are more big on, is beautification. That's where your downtown is, your retail, housing, but also festivals. This is all something that is addressed by this Underpass. It opens up the rest of the area for expanded festivals. Whenever we talk to the students at IHU and we ask them, what would it take for you guys to stick around? They said they wanted bigger festivals. This is right next to campus. It's something that my family and I like to enjoy with the lounge about the roundabout. And I can't imagine what if we like to have more space, more opportunity for shops, more opportunity for housing. We do have housing issues, if you haven't heard. This is an opportunity to develop even further. And all this, if it's done correctly, is going to equal more workforce. And we've got some workforce issues right now. So this is something that all stacks up and leads to the next thing. And finally, I'll just say that, you know, you guys won in the past because you made a plan and you worked a plan. This is the plan I think that you guys have already set in motion. It looks really good to me. And Uptown Normal looks wonderful again, but it's landlocked. Like, if you guys want opportunity through a heat current network, opportunity, this opens up opportunity for what you hope. I think, to me, it's something that we can use to help this community even further, attract more workforce, attract more housing, and keep that flywheel spinning.
Next speaker is Jonathan Sidon.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. I'd also like to speak on the Underpass, though certainly without the experience and authority of the, the prior commenters. I want to speak just from the perspective of a civilian. I live, I live in Normal off of Beet Street on the north end of, of Uptown. I have a lot of reasons why I frequently need to take the trail to get to the south end of Uptown, so just having the Underpass in the first place would be convenient. I'm excited to use it when it, when it exists. But largely, I'd like to just offer my sort of support and celebration for the Underpass project on three points. The first is absolutely safety. Prior to this meeting, there was a presentation about the Go Safe project. I've, I had a chance to work on that report. I've also read it very closely. I, I know the data fairly well. We actually experienced in our county 750 injuries on our streets every year, as well as 12 fatalities on our streets every year. 94% of those people who are injured or killed on our streets are cyclists or pedestrians. So absolutely providing this key element of infrastructure, it's an extremely expensive part of this type of plan to get to zero serious injuries or fatalities in our community. And the fact that the town is, has done the work to bring such an essential piece of infrastructure to protect some of our most vulnerable individuals that we have on our streets at one of the most dangerous places, at the crossings of our rail tracks, this is a huge step towards getting to zero injuries or fatalities in our community by 2030, and I commend the town of Normal for doing its part in that large regional plan to, to keep everybody safe. I also know from my work in the rail industry more specifically, that rail crossings and grade crossings are a massive safety issue. The FRA and many other federal bodies and state-level bodies are seriously working on this topic. It's very difficult to get new safety infrastructure at these places. So again, this is, this is one of the most dense locations of hazard for how our community members, and an Underpass is an extremely robust solution to that, that hazard for a very long time. So number one on safety, this is, this is a very important step. And again, I commend and celebrate the project. Number two is the, the economics of this, and we just heard this from Mark and from Patrick. I didn't know what the actual number was. 93% is unheard of, and I think just for someone like me, I'm happy to put my tax dollars to the town of Normal if they're going to bring me $9 back for everyone that I put to you guys. So that just instills confidence. It's exciting. Obviously, the economics of this, just on its face in terms of being for it, are super favorable for us. But then again, as Patrick was saying, just the opportunities that it completely blows up for the community over decades and generations are incredible. So from the economic standpoint, absolutely obvious go and something worth celebrating. And then thirdly, this is something that Mr. Peterson also spoke to. For me, this just represents such an amazing demonstration of the town's ability to collaborate, to motivate movement from partners that are very difficult to move and bring together. Union Pacific Railroad is not an easy body to move and to work with. The fact that the town has brought together not just UP, but the state brought federal grant dollars in, the ICC, these topics of rail infrastructure are extremely difficult to move, and it is a major testament to you all that you could organize this coalition, that the town of Normal brings that confidence from that group and raises trust from that group to be able to take on a massive project like this. I think it's something that when the town of Normal does deliver and, and is an excellent partner on building this project, that will just continue to accelerate those relationships. So a project I'm really excited about, I think it continues to move the town in the right direction, and absolutely wholeheartedly support. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cheryl Gaines.
Swap seats. Well, it's nice to be back here. I miss the old place, but you guys have been rolling right along, and it, it is great to see. And I just want to say that, you know, the town of Normal has an excellent track record for getting grants for projects, and that's because the town does planning, they just do studying, they get opinions, they do thorough budgeting and fiscal planning, and they end up with a great presentation to apply for these grants. They are not that hurry, slapped together, oh, we ought to try to do that. And, you know, I've heard people say, well, you know, there's, there just hasn't been enough study or whatever. Well, that's not how a person gets grants. Because for someone, I've written a lot of grants, and they're not an easy thing to gain. The town, its staff and council have had a, a solid reputation for doing all of those things in order to get grants. And the other thing is, is what we've done, what we've made, go back, it harkens back to the first mayor I worked with was Mayor King Carrick. He used to always say, we're going to plan our work and we're going to work our plan. And that's what Normal is known to do. And we don't study and plan and get grants and put all of it on the shelf to gather dust. Isn't that, that's a waste of money. Back when I was on the council, the original overpass was given a grant to us for that. And it, it was about a six, six and a half million dollar grant, and our portion of match would be about 1.5, 1.6 million dollars. But upon further study and looking at this, and we got more community involvement, we held open houses, we had a lot of planning, and we ended up deciding to go, and the council voted, we're going for an Underpass. It seems to be the way to go. It seems to be the best plan, and so that's what we did. And then planning and the conversations with all the different partners and entities began. And it's amazing, just I think as Mark Peterson said, is all these people are interested in this. They trust the town of Normal. They're willing to put their stamp of approval, they're willing to put their money on the line to say, this was a great project. So, 20-some million dollars with a one point, about a 1.8 million dollar match? Hmm. It's not really rocket science to figure out. That's quite a deal. It's a better deal really because it's better, it, it's fiscally better, but it's also physically better. With this deal, there's no need for a lot of elevators to get people up, get people down. They had all planned for that overpass was only people who were going to ride the train could use it, no bicycles, no people who just needed to get across. It was, you had to have a ticket, you were going to get across, and that's it. So with this, shoppers, pedestrians, bicyclists, passengers, they can have access from the north and south, and the south to north, vice versa. So please, um, give this your yes vote, bring it home, make Normal proud again. And please remember, because this is, I think, is an important piece, I don't mean to admit in negatively, but if we don't accept this, Normal's never going to get any more grant money from anybody ever again, because they'll find this to be untrustworthy.
Ms. Gaines, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
Done.
Our next speaker is Carl Seela. Carl, would you take the floor chair because we're having microphone trouble on that one?
Thank you. I'm Carl Seela, and I'm a normal guy. Again, I'm going to read my comments so I don't miss things. Short version for Angela or whoever prepares the minutes. I oppose the town of Normal writing a blank check for the Underpass. The current estimate is pre-virus and doubtless low by probably millions of dollars, which local taxpayers will be on the hook for. Many speakers have discussed safety issues. I've never felt unsafe at our railroad crossings or known anyone who does. We could significantly improve cyclists and pedestrian safety simply by asking them to obey the traffic laws as opposed to running stop signs and texting as they walk blindly into traffic. This could have the added bonus of potentially bringing in money versus costing the taxpayers. Other speakers also cite the grant money involved, which I agree is impressive, but this is still taxpayer money, just not directly taxed through Normal. It goes through the state or it goes through the feds, but it still comes down to it's taxpayer money, so we pay it out and we get it back. But we all know your pet projects move forward regardless of citizen input, taxpayer cost or less glamorous alternatives. So when you do move forward with this, I ask that you tap on a few hundred dollars. Projects like this usually include a plaque glorifying the, the mayor and others involved. I simply ask that you also recognize the true heroes who sacrifices make, make such ego projects possible. The residents who have suffered brown drinking water, the taxpayers who recently suffered sewage in their basements, not the first time, and any others whose lack of access to basic items the town should be paying for, for their sacrifices, speed up the money for this and your other glamorous projects. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment tonight. I, I will note that we do have a commenter towards the end of the meeting. Ms. Bernie has comments. I just wanted to acknowledge that so that you will have your opportunity to speak. Thank you. We move to the omnibus agenda, items considered routine and will be taken with one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. Ms. Smith?
Item D.
Mr. Nord?
Item B is envoy.
Motion for approval?
I moved.
Second.
Second.
Items considered under omnibus tonight are approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of July 6, 2021, and a resolution to accept the proposal for lime sledge removal from the United Liquid Waste Recycling of Clyman, Wisconsin. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
Those items are approved. Item B is a report to receive and file Town of Normal expenditures for payment as of July 14, 2021. Mr. Nord?
I so move.
Second.
Mr. Nord?
I just wanted to point out on this one that, that parking garage deck loss, for everybody to get the little parking cards, this past month was $12,678. And I'd like this council at some point to consider asking staff to look at solving this loss, this monthly loss. Thank you.
Further on this item?
I'll question, I think we are doing a parking study, are we not, Ms. Reese?
Yes, we, in fact, we are, and I believe it's scheduled to be on your August 2 agenda. We've saw proposals.
All right, so.
Mr. Nord?
Will it address this?
It will be a study that will address parking situation, deck on street, surface parking, and make recommendations on solutions. So it will ultimately have a recommendation. If council desires that we provide free parking and, and raise the gates, we can certainly do that. That would be council's decision. Staff's not recommending that. We're recommending we go through the structured process of the study and find out what's, what's best.
I think I'm hearing free parking or raise the price of parking is the, the two comments that were made tonight. Further on the item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
The report to receive and file is approved. Item D is a resolution to award the bid for the White Oak Road and Hovey Avenue Water Main Extension Projects, awarding that bid to Stark Excavating in the total cost of $1,600,000, $600,962 and 50 cents, plus up to a potential $15,000 bonus for early completion. Ms. Smith?
I move this item, please.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Yes, I had some conversations with our water director, who's stepping forward, because I had requested he share some of the conversation we had. As, on looking at the council packet, you can see how this main is connecting the two systems, but I was needing some clarification on the value of that, and if you could please provide that clarification.
Yes. The value of looping this part of the system really is priceless. The residents located west of Sheringham Drive along College Avenue, so the residents in the Prairie Garden subdivision, and all the, the businesses along West College Avenue, and, and including a couple of the outbuildings that, that we serve on the Rivian property. If there's ever a failure on that main, and we've had some main breaks in the past there, since it's only fed one way, if we have to shut that main down, every one of them is without service until the, the repair is made, and then the system is restored. So by looping, by installing this main and looping it, we could shut valves in an area and just isolate a smaller section instead of all of those residents and businesses.
And is it customary that the town is paying for the expense of installing this water main project, this water main project that is connecting these two loops? Or would it be, would there be any instance where the private landowner would be responsible for this component of cost?
In a situation like this where there is no development taking place today, again, the town is doing this to get a better kind of backbone in our system. Loop it, provide the redundancy. Again, in the EPA's mind, dead end water main, they tried to avoid. It, it does happen. This is an opportunity for the town to fix those issues, but then also set themselves up for future economic development in that area as well.
And it's only at such time as development takes place that we would address such issues as tap-on fees for any individual that is looking to use the water made available because of these new lines?
Yes, that is correct. There are two fees that a user pays when, when making a connection to the, the town's water main. There's the physical tap, which the, the town water department makes that physical tap. So if a developer is putting in a, a new residential area, that's typically an eight-inch tap, an eight-inch water main. So we've got price for that. And then there is a system development charge, which is $1,440 per inch size of service. So kind of make math a little bit easy, if it's a new subdivision that, that say there's a hundred homes going into that has 100 one-inch services, it's 100 times that 1440. That's the fee that the town receives back then for that.
And all of this property is within the Normal Town limit, so any future development will become water customers of the Town of Normal and share the price of service with existing residential and commercial customers?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nord?
Sure, thank you for coming up. I've got a question. Have there been any complaints about this water service? Because this existed for, gosh, close to 30 years.
There have not been complaints from residents, or residents and/or businesses. Typically, they don't test for chlorine, so they don't know that the chlorine level is dropping. We are required to collect 50 samples every month as part of our testing that we do with EPA. So it's, it's stuff that we notice. When we see it get below two parts, we proactively go out and flush to bring that up to four parts. So there's always chlorine in it, it's just we're having to flush to maintain it versus if the system's looped, it does a better job maintaining it itself.
Sure. Now, we're extending the water service along College, so that's going to fully loop around and serve these businesses that are here on, oh, whatever road that is across from Wiley Drive, just on the northeast corner. So that's going to loop around anyway.
We currently serve all of those properties along the north side of College Avenue.
Yeah, and that's where it's dead-ended. But we approved for a water main extension to go all the way down College and then around Rivian and back to connect to the north.
Yes.
Yeah. So then...
Well, just, just for clarification, the council approved the study.
Correct.
The project is out for bid, so you haven't approved the bids for construction of that section.
I assume that's coming forward, because like, you know, some, like, like, like a speaker said, why would we spend money on something we're not intending to do?
True. I just wanted to clarify for the audience listening that the council hasn't actually approved the construction of that segment yet.
Okay.
Yes, that will loop that portion of College Avenue, but College Avenue is still a dead end from Sheringham if this project doesn't take place. It's only going to be fed from Sheringham Drive. It's not looped.
Sure, but it's not dead-end anymore either.
Yes, it is.
No, it would still be dead-end.
Even though, it, it's a loop back to itself.
Okay. So over the course of 30 years, this has become an issue. I take it. Will any of this also increase capacity for water to be served out there? I mean, like, will more gallons be able to flow to, say, Rivian?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, there is a 20-inch main along College. We won't give them any more gallons than what could go out there today. It's just providing that redundant feed out there so that if one line breaks, it can be fed from another main.
Okay. Had Rivian, and had Rivian not come to the community? Is this a project that was on the books to do?
Mr. Nord, that's not an appropriate question. We're talking about looping, and Rivian is not part of this issue. I think he just answered that question.
Has there been any conversation with Rivian about chlorine quality?
Mr. Nord, we're not talking about Rivian tonight as part of this project. There will be opportunity to talk about that on other projects, but that doesn't affect this project, so we're not bringing that into the conversation.
Then I will rephrase. Have any customers that may potentially use this service asked or had any conversations about chlorine levels?
No, as I stated earlier, we catch it in our monthly sampling before a resident would know that it's at a lower level than what the EPA would require.
Okay, I mean, not just EPA, but like chemistry for other industrial purposes? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we just treat the water for EPA and Department of Public Health regulations. We don't treat it for any commercial end user.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you. Thanks for all the helpful information, and I'm sure our audience is a little smarter about water mains, looping and dead-end water systems, and more than you probably ever wanted to know when you, when you came to a council meeting. Show for Road 101 and Sewer 101, we do that once every other year, once every year or two. Fascinating, if you like municipal infrastructure. I, I guess I just want to lend a voice of thanks and support. You know, we do testing. I didn't realize it was 50 times up a month?
A month.
A month. I didn't realize it was that much. I knew we did it. But we recognize a problem on our side and have the ability to try to, to, to do something proactive, to be redundant for not only consumers, but for a few businesses that are on that line, principally residences out there. But, and so we have an opportunity to do something to, to provide some redundancy in our system before it's broken and before residents complain or before businesses complain. And, you know, we, we get beat up a lot for not maintaining infrastructure or doing enough for the infrastructure for our residents and our businesses, and here's a chance to do something for it. So I appreciate you guys prioritizing, recognizing that there's a, there's a small problem growing, but we have the opportunity to do something before it becomes a bigger problem. It's fantastic, and I'll tell you, going around to some of the conferences that we have a chance to go to as elected officials, we don't hear a lot of municipalities on the proactive side of their infrastructure problems. They're usually in the reactive, fix-it-after-it's-broke problem, so I appreciate the Town of Normal as being proactive and have the opportunity to do something positive before it comes a negative. So thanks very much for your work and staying on top of that.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I think Mr. McCarthy addressed the issue of applauding the town for being proactive in this, because I, I fail to see the consistency in criticizing us for failing to deal with infrastructure issue when it comes to some recent storms and sewer issues, and in the same breath then castigating the town for wanting to take action on chlorine levels that the town is aware of before any citizens may, would even be knowledgeable in the matter. Thank you.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
The item is approved. That concludes our omnibus agenda. We have one order, one item of general orders tonight, and that is a resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation under the fiscal year 2019 Build Transportation Grants Program for the underpass project at Uptown Station and approving an associated budget adjustment.
Move, approval.
Second.
Thank you. I think I'm going to start off with some comments on this tonight, and some of them you've heard, but I think it's important to talk about in terms of milestone events or major projects that, that affect the community. And this council, while I've served with it and prior councils that I've served with and councils prior to me not serving, have always looked at this, these kinds of projects with the best interest of the community in mind. And they did so with vision, and they dedicated themselves to that vision, to be delivering a quality project to the community, to make the community they live in a better community. Without that vision and dedication from this council and previous councils, there would have been no Diamond Star. Without that vision and dedication, there'd be no Constitution Trail. There would be no Normal Theater. There would be no Uptown. There would be no Rivian. These are the kinds of decisions we're faced with. They're sometimes tough decisions that we have to make, and, but we do so knowing that we're doing it to improve the quality of life and economic development in our community. And before we, I open it up to other comments, I want to congratulate the Town of Normal staff for the stellar work that you have done to bring this project forward with a 7% local matches. It is unheard of. I had talked to some mayors around the, the state about this project, and when they, they were dumbfounded when they found out what our match was. So congratulations to you for the work, the savvy, the pleading, the begging that you did, whatever it took to get that match down. Thank you. Ms. Cummings?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want people to understand, because some, I, I know some of the emails we received focused on whether or not we were literally voting on the project itself. And tonight, it's really more about accepting the grant agreement that was given to us. And tonight is our way, as a, as a yes would say, thank you to Senator Duckworth, thank you to Senator Durbin, thank you to Representative Darren LaHood, thank you Representative Rodney Davis, for not only supporting us, but putting your name on the line, and in a bipartisan way to ensure that our community had an infrastructure project funded at 93%. And so not only that's at our federal level, but we also had our local, our, excuse me, our state representatives who helped us ensure our state dollars were received. So this, our yes is a thank you to Representative Dan Brady, and a thank you to Senator Jason Bergman for supporting our efforts. Our no is a slap in their face, because it is a struggle to, to go on our behalf to say why their community is in need of this money that can go anywhere else. The Illinois dollars could have went to anywhere else in the state of Illinois. It did not have to come to Normal. The federal dollars could have went to anywhere else. And whether we like the fact of the use of tax dollars, because it's your money, so you say, it's going to be earmarked already, and if it doesn't come back here, it's going to somebody else's city. And in no better place can it be than right here in Normal, Illinois. I want my dollars to come back here. I don't want them to go to Cheyenne, Wyoming. I don't want them to go to Oak Park, Illinois. I want them to come right back here to my town, where I can see my dollars put to work. And so I am thankful for this opportunity. I'm so glad that many of even the conversations I had, just in some of the advocacy work that I was able to do, to see that not only our local ones supported us, but there was also other representatives who I know I spoke with, who supported our efforts. And to them, I say thank you as well for getting behind our community and supporting this effort. Again, 93% match, when the federal government at one point, when we did not get a grant, told us, this administration will only support a 50%. They told that to us, to our face during One Voice. And for us to then come back now and say, well, we did better than 50%, you gave us 93. So this is a great day, and this is something to celebrate. This is the beginning of our continued growth as a community. This is our, our opportunity to continue to attract our next generation of students. We, we say that we educate them here, we've asked them what can we do to maintain them here. And part of these things that we're doing, including this underpass, is a part of that response. And to say no is to say, your voice doesn't matter either in this community, and we don't care if you stay by not doing those things that they have said would attract them and keep them here. So I am in support of tonight. I'm looking forward to this. And also thank you to all those who have written letters on, in support of our efforts here, because there have been many... in support of our efforts here, because there have been many, and it has been at both state and federal level, a bipartisan effort, and we thank you.
Ms. Cummings, you give me a segue into something. As a community, we do these things, these kinds of projects as a community. And I'd just like to acknowledge some of the people that stepped up during the process for this underpass in support of moving this project forward. And that would be the City of Bloomington, McLean County, Illinois State University, Illinois Wesleyan University, Heartland Community College, State Farm Insurance, Advocate Broman, the Bloomington Normal Building and Trades, McLean County Chamber of Commerce, the Bloomington Normal Economic Development Council, United Way, Markfirst, Ambits, and there are many more. I'm sure I've missed some. But that's how projects like that, this, happen in our community with broad support.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. On packet page 7-6, there's a cost code...
Could you repeat that number again?
7-6. There's a task code. It's called Project Administration, that it says that the funding is not through the grant, but it's going to be performed by town staff and consultants under unexpected Phase 1 funding. So that's part of this project, but that dollar amount's not included. How much is that Task 1 dollar amount?
Mr. Nord, I will ask Mr. Otto and Mr. Comfort to come forward. Phase 1 is currently underway, and I think these gentlemen can share those dollars. And in fact, Mr. Comfort, let me ask if you need to move over. Where's Vasu? Should he move over one microphone? The middle one doesn't seem to be working well, so we'll separate you two. And Mr. Comfort, thank you.
And I'm not asking Phase 1. This is Task 1
Right.
of this grant
Right.
project.
I understand.
Okay.
But it does indicate that Task 1 would be covered by unexpended, excuse me, Task Number 1 activities would be covered by unexpended Phase 1 funding. So I want to ask Mr. Otto and Mr. Comfort to explain a little bit about that missing piece on Task Number 1.
Sure. The Phase 1 budget for this project is $1.5 million. That was authorized by council. So we have some budget left in that, that we can perform what we call a project work plan is one of the things that is required for this Task 1. So a consultant came in under budget during their Phase 1. So the project work plan essentially is, how are you going to do the project? So basically, we have all the information. It's just compiling it into a form that the FRA needs to see to satisfy the grant agreement. So we're not talking about a high-dollar amount. It's basically information that we already have that was generated because of the extensive Phase 1 that was already done.
How much money is remaining from that?
I don't have the exact dollar amount. We can look into that.
Okay, because it also says project agreements, financial performance reports, and there's been members of the community that have emailed the town council and town manager wondering how much money has been spent from that initial 1.5. And I want to say it was pretty close to almost all being spent. So do we know how much going forward we're looking at? I mean, is this $1 million more? Is this?
No.
How much?
We will stay within the 1.5 that we have budgeted for Phase 1.
Okay, but of this Task 1, how much is projected to be spent going forward if we move forward?
It's very little. Like I said, all the information is generally already been generated, so
Can I have a number?
I don't have that number.
Is it under $100,000? Is it, I mean, little's...
Certainly.
Okay. And then, as far as project management, the person that was doing this before has since retired. Who's going to take on this project going forward if we decide to go with it?
Sure. I will be the lead. I'll be responsible for making sure that the team implements the project. We have a very experienced team working on the project in terms of town staff with experience in managing both federal and state grants. We also have an extremely capable and talented consultant in the WSP that we've utilized throughout the Phase 1 project, anticipating, working with them also for the Phase 2, based on the selection that we made for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 back when they were hired for the Phase 1. So I'm very confident in project delivery, that our team can deliver the project.
Okay. And then, the construction estimates were done well before the pandemic. Since the pandemic, construction prices have gone way up. According to Daily Construction Journal and Associated General Contractors of America, lumber, 171% increase. Steel has doubled PVC over four times, and there's labor shortages. So the concern I have is this estimate that we had before, it hasn't been updated. And the federal government and the state government has said, we're giving you X dollars. That's it. Anything that's over, local taxpayers will pay for. I've been hearing that the town's committed to 7%. You know, we've got 93% funding. I don't, I can't correlate how that's accurate when construction, everybody else's constructions or construction costs have gone up. How can this, how come ours has not been updated?
Can I weigh in on that for just a second? And you're absolutely correct. Construction prices have gone up, but they've also gone down recently. Those was pointed out as a balloon. This project does not go under construction for two years, year and a half. We don't know what those prices will be. So I don't see how we can answer the question in today's prices when we're not going to start construction for a year and a half.
So are we saying that we know prices have gone up today? We don't know what they're going to be in two years and we have to pay for it. But we're not even willing to update the pricing now to see how much above the 1.6 we're really looking at because our constituents have to pay for it.
Actually, we're not pricing the project today. We're deciding whether or not to take a grant.
Well, according to the paperwork that they gave us, packet page 7-4, it says, if the cost of the project increases, the town is still obligated to complete the project, complete the project. And the USDOT will not increase the award amount.
And you're assuming that there would be no adjustments to the budget of the project? And when we have had cost overrides, in the past, we have value engineered, if you will, that's not the term we use, that we adjust the project to stay within budget. The question is, do we choose to stay on budget or not stay on budget?
Well, I don't know that we can change the project because it says the town is obligated to complete the project. If we're going to change it, we have to submit something different. Otherwise, we're not following up to our end of the agreement. But are you proposing that we approve this without knowing how much it's going to cost and where the money's going to come from?
We're not approving anything other than the willingness to accept the grant.
Okay. Also, in the grant agreement on packet page 7.33, it says, statement of capacity. We're making this statement to the federal and state government that the town has sufficient funds available to ensure the infrastructure completed or improved under this agreement will be operated and maintained in compliance with this agreement and applicable federal law. So if we can't have the funding conversation about where the money's coming from, we can't honestly tell the government we can afford to complete this project.
I think we're quite clear on where the money is coming from.
Where?
It's coming $1.6 million from the town of Normal, and the balance is coming from federal and state government.
Where in the budget? Is this coming from stormwater sewer funds?
No.
Is it coming from the general fund? So what project? Our budget has been defined for the next five years. We've published that. We've told the public that that's what our budget is. During our budget meeting, we said there was no money allocated or set aside for the underpass. Now that we're here for this, we need to know where we're going to come up with this money. I mean, granted, this is a grand project. Yes, I would love to see this amenity, but at the end of the day, we have to pay for it. I don't know about you or anybody at this council, how you handle your finances, but if you're going to make a large purchase, you just don't go out and buy it and say, you know, honey, I'm going to figure out how to pay for this later. You know, we don't even know how much it's going to cost. That's very irresponsible, very irresponsible, but that sounds like what we're being asked to do. We need to have this funding conversation. If we don't know where the money's coming from, it is very fiscally irresponsible for us to say, yes, let's just go with it. It doesn't matter how much it costs because any overage, all goes back to our local taxpayers.
Mr. Nord, could I respond to that comment? Mayor, Mr. Nord? A couple of things. You are correct. I've told you and council many times that funds are not included in the adopted budget for Phase 2 or construction. That is a truthful statement. I've even pointed out the page of the budget where you can find Phase 1 expenses. What we are asking tonight is, when council takes action, we've asked for council to approve the resolution executing the grant agreement and an associated budget adjustment. That action by council, presuming council approval, will direct staff to amend the budget. What we would do, as I believe is indicated on page 7-2 of the council packet, the second paragraph, it explains, the town will need to incorporate our local obligation of $1.692 million into the budget. Upon council approval, the budget will be amended to identify the expense in a specific capital line item to reflect underpass expenses for Phases 2 and 3. And once council approves this, presuming it's approved, staff will amend the budget so that way we can confidently move into Phase 2. We would come back to council in a couple of months with the Phase 2 contract for design. And then, when we go into the budget preparation process for fiscal year '22, '23, council will see this project obligation in the associated capital line item. Just as a reminder, for those, or perhaps in awareness, our capital fund is funded by transfers from the general fund. So our general fund revenues, when they come in, we will, what we would do tonight, presuming council approval, is we would take $1.692 million from unallocated reserves and move it over to capital. And that would be the action. So when we talk about how the project will be funded, it will be funded by general fund reserves moving into the capital fund, and we would move forward in that regard. And I believe all that has been communicated to you, perhaps by email, so I appreciate having the opportunity to explain this in a verbal conversation.
So there are projects that that money's been allocated to.
Mr. Nord, you've exceeded your 10 minutes, and we'll come back.
Ms. Smith?
If I can weigh in on the discussion of fiscal responsibility, it is difficult to project a budget beyond one year because of the likelihood of not being able to forecast beyond a 12-month cycle that you assume may repeat the previous 12 months or follow the trends of a prior range of months. That the allocation for this would be to go into the 2022, '23 fiscal year, and to my mind, would be no different than how we prioritized the water project that, because of citizen complaints, had been a lower priority in a later year, got bumped up to a more current year, so that it became a higher priority. And so to state that we are now looking to move this into the 2022, '23 budget year is not being fiscally irresponsible. It is responding to a project with 93% funding. And when you have an opportunity such as this, I don't see how it is fiscally responsible to walk away from it. Most homeowners are tasked with coming up with just 10% down and borrowing 90% for their home mortgages. We're not in that situation here. We have 7% that the town is asked at this stage to put towards this project, and 93% is not borrowed. 93% is granted to us because of all of the efforts that have been made to date to get us to this stage. And I, for one, think that it is a valuable opportunity for us to take advantage of this. There's been a range of opportunities along the way for individuals to weigh in on this, and I was glad to have some individuals who knew the history to recount all the citizen involvement that happened as far back as 2015, when six different underpass alternatives were reviewed. And the plan that we're looking at tonight was the one that by consensus came forward as what people thought should be approved. Following that 2015 analysis, 2016, the town of Normal entered into an agreement with Union Pacific to commit to something other than an at-grade crossing. And I'm sorry, but if you have a wheelchair or a walker, it is a challenge to get across railroad tracks. It is a challenge. And I don't think anybody with a disability should be made to feel that their needs are not something worth taking care of because they've been waiting since 1990 for the ADA to be fully implemented. And for us to prioritize safety, I don't think is asking too much. And I applaud the staff for working over the years at the direction of council members to put together five grants that got us to this point. And all of the individuals and all of the elected officials that have backed this project, I thank them for understanding that we have a community that can come together and can deliver a project to completion. And it is understandable that in any project, there is such a thing as contingency funding, to recognize the possibility that there will be cost overruns. And there are sometimes unforeseen costs that cannot be forecast. Ask anybody who has remodeled. But that is the point when we come and look at that at that time. But again, tonight, we are simply tasked with, do we want to accept this funding? And I say yes is our best answer to that offer.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. You know, I have a couple of concerns, and I probably sit on this topic in a unique place because I really have seen it from all sides. And I've been a skeptic. The last vote that we took on this was in June of 2017. That was 50 months ago. And a lot has happened since then. That was when we accepted the results of the study, the alternative being underpass. I did vote against that because the analysis, I thought, was kind of weak. But time has gone on, and the dollars have been secured. And so even though I voted against that preferred option, you know, the work has been done because it was continued to be a priority by majority vote. And so, I mean, I can deduce, as I think it's being said here tonight, that we really aren't in a position to turn this money away. To use a train metaphor, it's just, I can't help myself, the train has left the station with $20 million, and to back it up now would be a huge stain on our community. I think somebody said about, you know, would we ever, yeah, probably at some point, you know, as my mother used to say, never is a long time, but probably for a long, long time, we would be sort of on the naughty list of grant recipients. I get that. I really do. So I've been thinking a lot about this vote. But I want to raise up two concerns that maybe can be addressed tonight and maybe can get us through to where most of us feel okay about this. The two concerns I have, one has to do with information. Do we have enough information to take the vote tonight? And by that, I'm leaning on input from residents that I hear, residents who love Uptown, okay? You know, residents who are out there Saturday night with the really cool band. night with the really cool band. But they ask some very good questions, and I want to raise them up here. What will we do when we get to the other side? What will we build over there? Do we know? Will it incur more debt? To some of your questions, how confident are we with the project costs? I won't beat that drum anymore. But how confident are we with some of the forecasts about economic development? I loved what Patrick Coben said earlier. I hope all of that comes true. But have we talked recently with developers now in a post-pandemic economy to know where they stand, at least preliminarily, on potential projects? I'll stop there. And that's kind of the gist of the questions that I have fielded. I guess there's, well, I'll just leave it at that. So I don't know if those could be answered tonight or at some point. The second area of concern I have that I think needs to be addressed at some point, I don't think it can be done tonight, is to really engage the community in outreach about this. I know we did public open houses in 2017. And I know we did a best attempt during the pandemic last year with a virtual. But I, at the June 7th work session, if you recall, you know, I had some mixed comments there. And we didn't take a vote there. It was just really an exchange of information. And I recall saying at the time, you know, we need to rub, I think I said rub my nose in the safety issues. But speaking for all of us, you know, let's get that information out there. Let's get the economic development preliminary plans, you know, even if it's just kind of some early on potential from more recent discussions with developers. Let's start making that case and getting that out to the community. I think they really are demanding that more now, you know, in the last, I don't know, three to five years, I have really noticed that residents want to know more, not less. They want that brutal, what I call brutal transparency, that honest and open, candid conversation. And when we don't know the answer, just say, I don't know. We don't know. But give that opportunity. We're not going to please everybody. The naysayers will have hated this from day one. They're going to hate, you know, to some of the examples about given earlier of previous projects, you know, we're not going to change their minds. But we do, I think, need to inform many other minds that I hear that just don't have an understanding of the value of this project. And that's what I want to advocate for secondarily. One being the, you know, do we have the information to make the decision tonight along the lines of the questions that I asked earlier? And two, can we take the time to really vet this with the community and help them understand the value of what the merits and the risks are? That's what would really help me as a representative to put my name on the dotted line for accepting this. And I asked this, about the community outreach, I asked, maybe had we begun to do something? And I was told earlier this week, we hadn't, and that we wouldn't have time because it was coming to vote tonight. And so I'm disappointed by that. And so I guess I'm going to ask this question, and it may be more for the mayor. Is this a now or never vote tonight? And secondarily, when must we sign on the dotted line to accept this, these grants? And I'll pause there. I've got question over here. I've got questions over there. So I'll pause there. But that gets my concerns out and hopefully instigate some productive dialogue.
Well, I will tell you that the timeline has gone long on this for a number of reasons. And it's my understanding that we need to make a decision by the end of August.
To accept the grants?
Right.
Okay. And to some of the questions that I posed earlier, is that, are those kind of questions you guys can answer? Or is that something I'd rather go back up here for?
Yes, I will indicate that staff certainly believes tonight is the night that we need council to make a decision if we're moving forward or not in order to meet the FRA grant obligations. So to say that it needs to be determined by the end of August, I guess staff would say no. Tonight is the night which allows the FRA time to respond. And they have to then process the grant agreement. We're the first ones to execute.
That would be their deadline?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and actually, I'm sorry, Mayor, I think it was, I think it was initially September 30th, but, which means we take action tonight.
With now or never.
That is correct.
All right.
To a couple of your other points, in terms of, does council have enough information to take a vote tonight? I guess council, I can't respond to that. I certainly believe staff has provided adequate information in council work session, in conversation, in the report this evening, certainly in terms of the strategic priorities that council has determined for the last four or five years. So that, but that has to be council's decision of whether or not you feel you can make a decision. In regard to what happens on the south side of the tracks, construction, presuming council approval, construction of this piece of infrastructure does not close out, the schedule's not, the project is not complete until December 31 of 2025. I don't know of any developer that's going to make us a commitment on what they would do in 2026. Certainly, it would be our expectation, and we've budgeted for an Uptown 2.0 master plan. And our money is reflected in fiscal year 2223, so we can be more certain on how we want the south side of the tracks to develop. So how it develops is yet to be determined. The piece of infrastructure, though, the underpass, we know allows easier access, safe and accessible transportation from the south side of the tracks to the north side of the tracks. So we believe we've certainly made the case. But I can't make that decision for council. In regard to engaging with the community, yes, we have talked about that. We've had information on our website and the like. We had a work session on June 7th. The information was published in all the media sources. It is not typical for staff to promote projects before council takes action, other than, for example, one project such as, I should say, one initiative such as the One Normal Plaza PUD amendment. What we push out is information about the process. We have not done that in this case. I don't know if you believe that that would be pivotal in changing people's minds or helping people draw an opinion. I don't know. But that would be a little bit out of the ordinary. Certainly, if council adopts this and we move forward, there will be opportunities for citizen input. I believe we discussed on June 7th at the work session how citizen input could be incorporated into the plan when we talk about amenities, design amenities, things that we want to see in the plaza area and the south side of the tracks. And there will be input for that in that regard as we move through Phase Two, design development and construction documents. But I believe that, I believe we shared that message on June 7th. So I guess those are, those are my comments in response to your points.
Mr. Nord, I think you've entered another round. What happens if we vote no?
If council declines this, then we will be rejecting $13 million grant.
And then will the overpass be built?
Well, not an overpass.
Will the overpass that the state wanted originally do, would that be built?
Well, I think we would have to, I can't answer that. I think we would have to then enter into conversations with stakeholder groups again and find out what the options could be.
Okay. Because I asked, I, what would happen? And they sent me an email. They said that's the town's, they said to ask the town. So I'm asking the town, what would we do?
Right. And I'm responding, saying, I don't know that I'm in a position to say we would recommend building an overpass. I think we would have to, like I said, speak with all of our stakeholder groups, certainly Union Pacific, because it's their property.
Is, are the foundations for the overpass currently in place?
Mr. Otto or Mr. Comfort, can you respond?
Yes, they are. Yes.
Could I have clarification? Because I think only on one side of the tracks.
Yeah, I think only on the north side of the tracks they're in place.
Okay. So part of that infrastructure is there. Okay. The safety aspect, something I just want to point out and get on the record. There was an image that was presented of somebody climbing through train cars. I just wanted to say that that safety image was mapped from the tracks over here. That was from a crossing further west. And there are two underpasses between there and where this underpass is that we proposed. So I think that's a little misleading to have that image in there talking about safety.
Just to be clear, one of those underpasses has no pedestrian access.
Okay. Then for the citizens' input, citizen input, I, too, am disappointed that we did not get citizen input. I requested well over a month ago to get current citizen input. And that didn't happen. Now, something that people watching and people in the room may not know, for the emails that I received, my official town council email address, there were two or three people that were for this. There were many, many, many more that were against it. And also, I went out and I looked on social media, went WGLT, Panograph, you know, all these other sources to see what people were saying. The overwhelming majority of the taxpayers, the folks that live in Normal that will pay for this, was against this project, that it's a vanity project, it's not necessary, we've got other priorities. This is a luxury project. We have not had the conversation about the things that are currently scheduled, what's going to come off to fund this. We've got folks that are getting rusty water. We all just got emails from someone else on Margaret, I think it was, that said that they've got some water issues as well. And we've got people that have contacted us about their sewer backing up. The town has, I believe, four known shared sanitary and storm sewers in existence, plus there's some that we don't know about. So we've got these projects that we should get fixed. I don't know if you guys talked to any of the residents that had sewage backing up in their basement. Coming out of their toilet, they said it was coming out like a fountain, covering their ceiling. Those are things that I am passionate and will fight, you know, for our residents. Those are what I consider critical over a luxury amenity. And if we're not having that conversation about how we're going to pay for it, you know, this is like having that 50% off coupon and saying, we have to go out and we have to buy that Mercedes because we've got the 50% off coupon. And it doesn't matter if they jacked the price up, you know, 200%, just because they gave you that. And I think it's not being transparent and honest to recognize that the cost for this is going to be well more than the $1.6 million. And we're just going to gloss over it. And when we sign off on this, we are telling the federal government, we will do this regardless of how much it costs, regardless of how much the overages are. And I think it is irresponsible for us to step into that without having that conversation. So we know how much we're really looking at putting on our residents who have struggled through the pandemic. Thank you.
I'm just going to correct you and say that was a 93% off coupon, Mr. Nord.
Well, 93% off, but we don't know what it is.
Mr. Press?
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to start with a question or two for staff. I had more, but a number of them have gotten addressed already. One that hasn't is the topic of maintenance, unless I had missed that. That is something that, should this go through tonight, anticipating that it does, for the life of the underpass would be the town's responsibility. Financially, do we have a feel, or have we put together projections of maintenance as well as lifespan? I would, I would assume that different components within the underpass overall would have different lifespans. Hopefully, the tunnel part itself being the, the tunnel part itself being the longest, maybe, you know, portions on the ramp and park on, you know, the north or south, varying to a lesser extent. Do we feel for that?
I will defer to Mr. Otto and Mr. Comfort about how far in detail the design has gone. I think as we get into Phase Two, construction documents, we'll know more. Also, one thing I wanted to point out is during the June 7th work session on this, I believe Mr. Aldrich indicated that a maintenance agreement would be forthcoming with Union Pacific. So we have to have all those details ironed out with Union Pacific in the future. Mr. Otto?
Yeah, much of it will be determined as we go into Phase Two design. One thing that I personally am very concerned about is designing with maintenance in mind, knowing that we have to maintain this structure. That'll be formalized, as Ms. Reese indicated, through an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad. The, as far as a dollar amount, I don't have that just because we're not, we're not that far along in Phase Two design yet. We just know that, yes, there will be an investment over time to make sure that the infrastructure stays in good shape. The underpass itself is a box culvert, so it is probably the, one of the least expensive options that we initially looked at. We initially looked at like a pipe roof and also a jacked box, which are very non-traditional construction methods in this area anyway. And so it's probably the most maintainable type of structure, other than the open cut traditional bridge. But it's also probably one of the most maintainable structures. We have box culverts all over the community. So with the emphasis that we'll have on drainage, emphasis we'll have on maintainability during design, we will try to do our best to minimize those costs long term.
Do we, thank you. And I, yeah, I respect that. And I hear what you're saying. And I'm sure that the extent of our maintenance and the cost thereof varies wildly based on how this thing ends up being designed. However, do we, I mean, is there any kind of rough, are we talking $10,000 a year or a million a year? Like where roughly would you anticipate this thing landing from a maintenance standpoint?
I hate to throw out a number just because we haven't actually done the analysis. I would anticipate less than $50,000 a year.
Okay. So there are a number of things about this underpass that I like. And I will start off by saying maybe none, more so than being a reflection of how talented and capable our staff is. And congratulations to staff. I fully believe that there is a tremendous amount of work and effort and time that went into securing all of these grant dollars from both the USDOT as well as the different, different entities at the state level. And congrats, congrats and thank you to staff for that work and being able to bring this home and close those deals. Another thing that I like is, in general, the forward-looking, future-focused, visionary, but in a sense that is reality-based approach to our work here in the town of Normal. I think that if we sit around and only focus on what is right in front of us and the immediate and just say no to everything we don't like, that does a great disservice overall to the people that we're here to serve and represent. I would also suggest that I agree, I heard the comment made once or twice, that should the council vote down this action tonight and not execute the agreement, that that would put us in a position where we would very likely not have much opportunity to secure such large grants for anything in the future. I, I buy that. I would tend to concur with that mindset. I am I am also confident that, and we'll see, but I'm, I'm confident that that action of it not passing is unlikely tonight. And then there are some things that I still have questions on and I'm not sure about and, and candidly, some that I don't, you know, aren't, I don't care for. The maintenance, thank you, that was one item that I did have questions on. The estimated project budget is another, and that's something that was talked about early on. One note that I did not hear mentioned, but that is worth mentioning, if I understood in the USDOT agreement correctly, that at the time, the town of Normal submitted our grant application on July 15th, 2019, just over, you know, almost to the day, just over two years ago. At that point, the estimated project budget was 22.69 million. And then, at the time when the grant announcement was made, that the town of Normal received the $13 million grant, the estimated project budget went up to the current 23.94 million, which is roughly 1.2 or 1.3 million dollar increase in just a matter of four months there. That is, that is concerning. That is something that definitely draws my attention as we look at the fact that the, any overage to that amount is ultimately the responsibility of our taxpayers here in Normal and our local tax dollars. Wondering the impact and how much we will be talking when we are actually at a point of construction. This number, it could end up being the 1.69. It also could end up being considerably more. And to what extent that ends up coming is certainly a concern or a question as well.
Mr. Preston, can, can you allow Ms. Reese to address that? Because I think it actually isn't as you see it.
Right. Just a little clarification. When we submitted our grant application and, and we submitted a series of grant applications. First, there was the Tiger Grant, and it was denied, we were not successful. And then we moved to the Chrissy Grant. The, the grant opportunities changed over the years in terms of what the federal government called them. So we started with Tiger, we moved to Chrissy, all of those initials stood for something. I can't remember what the, all the letters stood for. And then the last grant opportunity was the Build Grant. That's the grant that we were successful. When we submitted our 2019 Build Grant, I believe our original budget was around 24 million for the project. And we asked the USDOT and the Federal Rail Administration to, for a grant award of 16 million. We asked for 16. When, when it was getting toward the end of the USD, DOT making a determination on what they would fund in all the grants around the nation, we had conversations with them, and it appeared that they would be willing and able to support a grant in the amount of 13 million. And with, in response to that, we worked with WSP Parsons Brinkerhoff. They went back to the table and found ways to do some value engineering. And at that point, we were able to reduce our project budget to the 22.6. And then, Mr. Aldrich mentioned at our June 7th work session, and it was in a slide, and we tried to explain it in the report, but we, we have, we went to council on June 7th and said, the project's 22.69 million, I believe. And here's our funding sources. And it left the town share at 1.69 million. Mr. Aldrich indicated that, at that point, the Illinois Commerce Commission reminded us that they had obligated 1.25 million dollars of rail crossing protection funds for this project. And we indicated that those 1.25 million then would go on top of our budget, allows some cushion. So that's why we moved from the 22.6 to the 23.9, is because that additional 1.25 million of grade crossing protection funds. And I tried to, I believe we tried to explain that, but maybe not well, in the council report by indicating why the, why the numbers had gone up just from June 7th to today.
Just, so for clarification on that note, I am looking at the USDOT agreement. It's packet page 7-27, attachment number five, changes from the application. The third attachment therein says, the estimated project budget, at the time of the, at the time of grant selection, next, well, hang on a second. At the time of grant selection, the total estimated project cost was the 23.9. But then if you go over, it says, the total estimated project cost has increased from 22.7 to 23.9, which includes Build Grant. And then, the total project cost was increased to cover inflation. Is that, are we talking the same thing and the inflation is just?
Yes, that's what.
The cushion, is that what you're?
Yes. Accurate statement?
Yeah, the 1.25 was added to the project, the funding available for the project, basically to account for some of the inflationary factors that we are seeing. So the, the project, as Ms. Reese mentioned, when we submitted the application to when we were selected, changed because we were able to do value engineering based on what the FRA was communicating in terms of what the anticipated award, award for the grant might be. So we remained at the 22.69 until just recently, when the ICC came through, and we're thankful for their partnership with the additional 1.25 million to allow us to increase the budget and the funding available, to allow for some cushion in the budget, in addition to the contingency we already carry in our budget.
Right. And if I could just jump in, on page 7.3 of the actual council report, the narrative, the first bullet point on page 7.3, we indicate the Illinois Commerce Commission grade crossing protection funds of 1.25 million. These funds have been added since the June 7, 21 work session, resulting in the increase of the project cost from 22.69 million to 23.94 million. And that's for, and we're allowed to use that for the inflationary factor or contingency.
And we also were of the opinion that getting 93 million dollars, or 93% match to our local match was a pretty good deal. We didn't think we were going to get 100% match.
If you need to come back to me, because I know I've taken up a lot of time there.
Go ahead.
Okay. A final thing that is, an item that hasn't been mentioned that I have considered is, from the economic development standpoint of this, the, while I, I appreciate very much that Mr. Hoben came here tonight and spoke on behalf of this, because a lot of the discussion that I've heard prior to that has been more anecdotal about the make or break economic development in nature of the underpass. And it's not a, it is not like a development of, you know, take your pick of a number that we've been involved with in town Normal, that it itself generates tax revenue and creates new tax revenue for the town. This is in, this is an asset that will never be a tax generating asset. Anyway, all that to say, let me wrap up my comments by saying clearly, I think there is a reasonable and a moderate case to be made on both sides of this discussion. And I think that, I, I just don't buy the argument that there isn't. I think that there are reasonable points to be made in both ways of this. I think there's a lot of good. I think there's also, for me personally, still some questions and some concerns outstanding. And overall, that's kind of where I'm at right now.
Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the Q and A to this point. There may be more. I guess I want to start up, back up and say thank you for everybody who's given input. Wherever you, whatever you wanted me, urged me to do, vote yes or vote no, your input's important and valuable, and I appreciate anybody that took the time to go beyond vote yes or vote no, to give me some perspective on, on your opinion. It, it all matters. I too, again, it's kind of a introductory comment, want to congratulate staff. I've commented on this before. A couple of my counterparts, our counterparts, and a community not too far away south from us, was Normal doesn't seem to be able to quit getting multimillion dollar grants to build stuff. And wow, for every 1.8 dollars, you are bringing 22 dollars back to our community? I don't know how we say no to that. I mean, any other community. And let's just level set on what that actually means. If we say no, your taxes don't go down, because those tax dollars are gone. If we say no tonight, some other community builds something that they want to build with our tax dollars in their community. That's what happens. So to level set on that. But an amazing job chasing these down. I happened to get to sit in at a One Voice with an FRA debrief from a no-grant application. And they were, A, impressed, two shocked that we bothered to come all the way to Washington, DC to sit in their offices to ask them, what can we do better? And what was, why weren't we competitive enough? And, and it wasn't that. It was, the other projects that were out there were really great projects, too, were a little farther along than our project. And, but they were very impressed, thought the project had great merit and really believed in it, and encouraged us to continue to submit grants. And the staff continued to do that, and ultimately has been rewarded. So a heck of a job, bringing our tax dollars back to do work in our community. Some folks said, use the money for something else. We can't do that, just for those kind of broadly. I got some of those questions to me personally. We can't apply for a grant for one thing and then take it and do something else with it. That's, I don't know if we call that fraud, but it's, it's not okay to do that for those that had, had asked me about that. I just wanted to make that more broadly. From a history perspective, for those here that haven't been around or weren't paying attention early on, years ago when we did this, it was mentioned that there was a very public, open process for how we got here. There was open houses that were mentioned, but there was also direct public input. You had the ability to call in, email, visit one-on-one with staff, but you also had the opportunity to come to some open houses that were right here, press on buttons, pick favorite options, blind, nobody knew what anybody else was doing. And that's how we arrived pretty overwhelmingly at the underpass option. The Uptown 2.0, as it's been called, what happens on the other side of the track if we build this? It's been pretty well documented in the media. There's, we've talked about a library. By the way, great questions, what happens on the other side? Fantastic questions. A library's been talked about. We had a, a strong interest from a, a local development group that's, from what I understand, still involved in housing, that would help meet some of our housing needs from the regional housing studies. That was conducted by the McLean County Regional Planning. And additional parking or parking structure has all been, those three things have all been pretty strongly talked about. What's possible? No specific projects, because as Ms. Reese mentioned, five, six years from now, what's going to happen? But those are some of the ideas. But fantastic questions. I do want to highlight safety of this. As Mr. Sidon, who was here earlier, a consultant in rail and marine safety, mentioned, railroad crossings are some of the most dangerous pedestrian interactions that we have in the United States. And so for us to do something proactive, to be able to do that, considering we have a children's discovery museum sitting right on the railroad tracks, and we're talking about another child, more child-oriented development on the other side of the tracks, and we know students who are, whether that one picture wasn't about it or not, I've seen them at Broadway and Linden, go under the gates with bikes, little kids, that this at least gives us a safety option, which is, I, I think should be a priority for any community, certainly a priority for me as a, as a councilman up here. But also the, the train passengers, and as Ms. Smith mentioned, the disabled folks have a good way to get across efficiently and effectively. From a financial perspective, I don't know how we say no to this. I think it's 97, or excuse me, 93% funded project is good. For some concerns that were mentioned earlier, we've got a pretty clearly communicated budget process. And as Ms. Reese read to us in the packet, what the location, and her comments, where the location of this money will come from, so we do know where it will come from. But further, the, the changes in the project costs that have just been talked about recently demonstrate staff's ability to value engineer, if necessary, to keep this project on scope and within our budget. Right? Now, does that mean it's going to be exactly what the numbers we see? Of course not. Right? My remodel, remodel project wasn't that way either. But because we have a 93% off coupon, I think we have to remember, that car, if we're going to drive that to the job to bring in money so we have future economic vitality, I think all of us would take that 93% coupon and buy that car to ensure economic and financial security and vitality of our community in the future. I think we would all do. I know I would, and I hope you guys all would too, if it helped ensure economic vitality of our future. What hasn't really been talked about tonight is jobs. Jobs, jobs, jobs. So we, we, we heard from, from labor in some of our communications, I got some emails directly and phone calls directly from labor about what this means for our local labor. And in turn, what that means for our local economy, because they live here and stay here and pay taxes and buy groceries and, and support our businesses. We cannot underestimate the multiplier effect of our community's dollars being spent with our local labor forces on projects like this to help our, the economic flywheel that Patrick Hoben, the head of Economic Development Council was talking about. Also, from a sustainability perspective, infill development, where we don't plow over cornfields or soybean fields or farm on the edge of town to build new, that we keep it here, we're existing infrastructure. It's the lowest cost development and the most sustainable development, because we don't have to build a bunch of new infrastructure, and we don't have to build more roads to our police to service it and our fire department. So this is the best type of development that we do. It's inside, and there's plenty of infrastructure assets and services available to support it at little to no additional cost to the taxpayer. Lastly, I, well, not lastly, but in this breath, I do want to highlight something Ms. Cummings said early, in this day and age of divisive politics, for our local representatives on the federal and the state level, on both sides of the aisles, to come together in one voice to say, this is a good project, and we're going to act together. When's the last time you heard both sides of the aisle getting together to write letters in support of, of anything, really? And so, they believe enough in this project as we do. And they, and sitting in that FRA room, they believe, the federal government believed this was an amazingly good project. I hope it's enough for our community to realize how important and how good of a project this really is. For people to put partisan politics aside, to come together, to say, this is really important for our community, for jobs, for safety, for economic development, that this is something we would get behind. For all of that, I'm very, very supportive. And I too want to congratulate staff again. An incredibly stellar job to be able to bring that kind of money back, our, our hard-earned tax dollars back, to keep our local match so small. I want to hearken back to when we voted on this project. And there was a lot originally on the underpass, a little bit of history I'll end with. When we were talking about this, there was, there was, it was controversial, as it was, Mr. Peterson mentioned. There was a lot of, oh my God, that's going to cost so much. And I sat up here, and I wasn't the only one, who said, I support this project, it's a great idea, it would be good for economic development and future vitality and growth of our community. But I won't support it unless we get substantial external funding. If you don't believe me, go back and look at the video. I said that. Several other people up here mentioned similar statements. We have 93% external funding. I said I would support it. If we got that, we got it. I'm supporting it.
Ms. Lawrence?
Thank you. So I think we're, we've got the issues out on the table. You know, I, I still am concerned about some of the questions I raised, and just timing-wise, it sounds like we won't know those answers until later, in terms of what is on the other side and so forth. So I'm trying to figure out how to, how to ensure our residents that they're getting, they're getting a getting, they're getting a fair deal here, okay? If that's the right term. But I just, I want to do something. So I'm going to suggest some ideas. One concern is about the costs of the project, but maybe even more so about what happens on the other side. I, for one, am concerned about, you know, is it, is it a 30, you know, is there a bond waiting for me on the other side, you know, to build a project? And since we don't know that yet, because we haven't done the master plan, I'm wondering if we put some controls on this tonight. I don't know if this would be allowable, but can we put some kind of ceiling? We know the floor is 1.69 million, local match, but can we put a ceiling? That'd be one idea. And/or something about incurring debt. I think those would be two controls that would make me feel better in light of some of the unknowns. Similarly, in terms of community engagement, I would like to add, and I guess it's a control, that we structure that master planning process in a way that is very deliberate, almost Citizen Summit-like set of exercises. We did them years ago, I think, with Uptown 1.0 and maybe even early stages of Uptown 2.0, of, you know, charrettes and visioning and so forth, not to retread things that have already been done, but to pick up where we left off and get that process going that I'm saying earlier, you know, I don't feel like has been fully vetted in a while, you know, since 2017 with the community. So if we can put some of those requirements on this, I would feel a whole lot better about signing the dotted line tonight. In the absence of that, you know, I guess I go back to either a minor delay, as far as we can go. I don't, I don't know if we could even go so far as to request an extension from the granting agencies, you know, that would be one option. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm reaching a point of some level of exasperation and disappointment on some of my concerns, that I may have a question for the parliamentarian later about options of voting. So I'll, if I can reserve that question for later. So those would be my two suggestions to get, to get to yes.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, you've had your two opportunities to speak.
I only had one.
Oh, you only had one?
I can count.
All right. Apparently, apparently I can't. Ms. Smith?
For those of you who've been hearing the whistle in the background, that's the restoration of the 8:30 train to Chicago. At the Amtrak press conference this afternoon, they announced that there are five trains now running to Chicago on a daily basis. And that's the 8:31, the 8:30 train that'll get you into Chicago close to 11 o'clock at night. And they had announced that they had cut service. The Texas Eagle was cut to three days a week, which eliminated one route between here and Chicago on a daily basis to just three days instead of seven, because Amtrak passenger service had been down 95% in one month, following the worst of the outbreak of COVID. They're up now 60% over their 2019 passenger rates, even before the restoration of service today. They're putting in new seats in the train cars that we will be getting on our routes. This council has had before it multiple plans for subdivisions. Building permits are up. Is it 50% or 100% from prior years? 50% more than the previous year. This trajectory speaks to an improvement in our economy unanticipated in any other downturn of our history. The nine, how we pay for the maintenance of this, we pay for the maintenance of this the same way we pay for the maintenance of Conny Link and the park and the other projects that we voted on previously. The town has been growing and we've been able to absorb that because of our growth. I don't think we're looking at an exorbitant amount of maintenance required for an underpass as opposed to heating a building. So that, to me, is not something that should be a concern. As to delaying it, the federal government is on a fiscal year end that ends September 30th. Ours ended earlier than this. So I think it's unreasonable to push this out and push this into yet another fiscal year and a budget year. And in terms of what about going back to the plan that was before us originally, that would have been about the same dollars, but would have been a utilitarian tower exclusive just to Amtrak passengers? The agency that was going to provide that has rolled their commitment to us into this project. We would be saying, I love what you got us, but can you instead take it back? I want to get something different. I don't think that's a gracious way to look upon a gift. And as far as looking to the future and worrying about what happens in the future, let me just share with you what happened at my church back in Georgia. Originally, they built a small chapel that they thought would be where they would worship until such time as the congregation grew and their plans were to build this nice edifice overlooking the hills and the streets below. Guess what? It never got to that point, it never got built. So worrying about what might happen five years from now doesn't address what is facing us tonight. 93% funding for a project that has a deadline because of federal fiscal year end, and if we say no to it, we're saying, don't trust normal to ever move forward with any projects that we ask you for and later change our mind. I think it is not time to say no, because no decision is a decision, and I'm ready to vote yes.
So Ms. Lorenz, I do want to answer your two questions that, I think Ms. Reese was quite clear that we have to make a decision tonight, one way or another. And I think to clear that up, it's because the FRA needs time for them to do their work. They are not the final decider on this. It's the Congress that is the final decider, and they're the ones that set the deadline on the grant. So giving the FRA time to do their paperwork and administer that and present it takes some time. So I would agree with Ms. Smith, I think now's the time to vote.
May I make my amendments?
Yeah, I think I interrupted you, so, and went to Ms. Smith, so please.
If I can, please, I'd like to offer up an amendment to tonight's vote that would put some measures of protection, I think that was the word I was looking for, for our residents, on some of the risks associated with this otherwise very good project. And those protections would be a cap on the, or a ceiling on the amount that we would allow to be local matched. And also a commitment to begin as quickly as possible on citizen engagement in this project, to help convey options, value, and the merits and the risks. Those would be my two amendments.
So we have a motion for amendment, is there a second?
Can I ask a question about it?
You just need a second.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'll start the conversation by saying, it's quite clear how this vote is going, so this is just postponing that vote. I am very clear on how this vote is going to come out, and so we're just going to continue to talk about it, but it's not going to change the vote. So is there discussion further on, Ms. Reese?
Just to, oh, sorry. Just for clarification, maybe I don't even need to ask this question, but your motion is not necessarily to amend the grant agreement, which is before you, it's just to add additional language onto the motion?
I'm looking over.
Because we don't have authorization to amend the grant agreement.
Right.
This is the federal grant agreement, so.
Right, the grant agreement itself doesn't have caps on it, so if we were to put caps on it, we would need an amendment to the agreement that I have to go back to. That's for consideration.
That was part one of my quick process.
So, Mr. Day, the amendment, as I read it, is to postpone the decision. Is that correct?
No.
No? Restate your amendment.
My amendment is to make some additions to tonight's vote that would accept the agreement as written, plus enact controls and protections for our citizens, that we establish a ceiling on the local match, and that we commit to citizen engagement on the master planning as soon as possible.
And just to, just to be clear, two things. The, the one possibility would be, just our takeaway as staff is, we're clear, we understand how you feel about this, Ms. Lorenz, and we can use that as our own direction and come back to council with details down the road when we get into Phase Two design, if for some reason, there's reason to have further discussion about project costs. In regard to citizen engagement, we haven't budgeted for a master plan of the south side of the tracks until next fiscal year. So you've linked your motion to master planning, which we can get started on that right away, but then we would ask council later, when we come back with our master planning action, we would ask council to then amend the budget. So I just, I just want to be, be clear, kind of the convolution of some of these, these items you're asking for and how to, how to fit those into this action item.
Mr. Nord?
Whenever, well, my question, the way that I understand it, if I rephrase it, is tonight, we are just authorizing the execution of the agreement. And then what I'm hearing in a different way would be, okay, we've authorized the execution of the grant, but before we spend the dollars and go further, there are a couple points that we want to do. One, which would be finish recalculate, finish coming up with the rest of these numbers and recalculate to see how much money it's going to actually cost us, and get public input. And the third one was input about Uptown 2.0, what all that entails. But essentially, we're just voting on this and then we're putting into, I guess, yes, a commitment that we will come back and vote after we see all the numbers and we've had citizen input. So then it meets the need of getting to the FRA, the info they want, you know, it kind of seems like it's meeting everyone's needs.
Mr. McCarthy?
I guess, having listened to all this, I guess my question, I suppose, is for Mr. Day, is the proposal in front of us is to move forward with a grant, is what's being suggested doable in this item?
In terms of the cap, I don't believe it is, because that's not, we're executing the grant agreement, and that is not part of the grant agreement.
So I, I appreciate.
In terms of the citizen engagement, I'm not entirely sure what the substance of that motion is.
Okay. And I'm not commenting, I'm just process question just right now. So I guess this is Ms. Reese's question, so their question about budget seems to be floating around here. And so budget changes or project changes, is there a council involvement in that, in any part of the process from initial?
Well, the next step would be, assuming council approval of this tonight, the next step would be for staff to move forward, then to move into Phase Two. And we will come back to council with the design contract for Phase Two, and certainly we'll talk, once council approves that and we get into further project design details, construction documents and the like, we can, you know, keep you up to speed with information as frequently as council would like on the status of that design and what things look like. And then, of course, before we go out for budget, or out for bid, we will have these conversations during our budget preparation process. The capital investment plan, which we always review with council in December, council reviews the proposed budget in January of every year and adopts it in March. So those will be, those are three traditional times in addition to other conversations we can have.
So we will have input on the project and the project costs along the way, is essentially what I'm hearing? So in a separate thing. So it sounds like some well-founded concerns, but maybe not addressed tonight in this action? Because frankly, I'd be thrilled to get Uptown South master planning going as soon as we can, I'd love that, but when it fits in our budget. And I would assume Mr. Otto and company project team would have some opinion about how soon is too soon to start planning when we don't even have a project put out for bid yet, and what that's going to look like, and how do we master plan if we don't really know what's there yet? So I'm assuming at some point you would have an opinion on that.
Yeah, I think we put the, I believe the Uptown master plan, as Ms. Reese said, is a year out right now. And what the next year looks like will be a little further along in the design. We plan to bid the project for construction in December of next year. So that would put us in kind of the middle of our next, the following fiscal year, FY23. So might be, might be the time to do that. Certainly up for discussion as we move forward on what the right timing is for that.
And so I'm more inclined to make sure we have our design, so we really know what the other side is going to look for before we spend, because that master plan's going to cost taxpayer dollars. So we pretty much want to know what's going to be on the south side from the underpass before we start to master plan. So as much as I'm with you, and I want to do, get going right away and see what we can attract, frankly, if we have a plan, hopefully we can attract developers, I would want to wait until at least we get design done. So again, I'm supportive of moving forward the way it is. We're going to have budgetary opportunity to vote on the project through the budget process, and I certainly want to wait for at least the design phase before we try to master plan on the South Campus.
Mr. Preston?
Two things. One, just to pick up where Mr. McCarthy left off, the allocation of these dollars, it suggests it'll be a line item in capital, but that will go through, obviously, our normal budgeting process to where the question of, you know, where does the local match come from, or how is that prioritized, and what doesn't get prioritized as a result of that? Those are questions that will not be addressed with this action tonight, but will be addressed during a budget session, is that correct?
I think we need to stick to the amendment, the discussion to the amendment. We have an amendment. And I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing where that fits.
Is the, it doesn't. If the amendment isn't something that we can do as a result of the USDOT agreement, I would respectfully ask that the amendment get withdrawn?
Withdraw.
Please call a roll on the amendment.
Don't, no, she withdrew it.
I withdrew it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I mean, it's an interesting.
Mr. Nord, do you withdraw your second?
A question before you withdraw it. According to Phase Two, or Task Two, it says, final design package, including final plan specifications and estimates, that's a part of.
Mr. Nord, the question. Mr. Nord, the question is, will you withdraw your amendment?
I didn't make the amendment.
Your second.
I'm sorry, I withdrew mine, because it doesn't look like it's going to pass.
No, let's vote it down.
Okay, fine. Let it stand, take a vote.
Never encountered that, Mr. Day. We have the amendment withdrawn, but not the second, so the amendment still is up for vote.
If the mover withdraws their amendment, then the withdrawal of the second is not necessary.
Okay.
Okay. So, we have no amendment.
May I talk again? Oh, Mr. Preston was talking.
Just the one question I had already asked about the budget process. If the question is posed, where is this local match money coming from? That question will be addressed while it's a capital line item, you know, articulated as that in this action tonight. The answer to that question is not decided specifically tonight. That will be part of our budget process. Where is this local match money coming from? What gets impacted by it within the capital budget? What doesn't by this additional money being placed? Is that, am I correct?
Actually, Mr. Preston, with council authorization tonight, tomorrow, the Finance Department would move 1.69 million from general fund reserves into the capital fund, and we would create a capital line item for this project. That's what we are, that would be the associated budget adjustment we're referencing. So, moving 1.6 from unallocated general fund into capital fund.
So, I'm going to call a vote here. We've all had our shot at this, so please call the roll.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston? Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz? Mr. Nord?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The item is approved. That concludes our general orders tonight. We have two items of new business. The first is a resolution funding the overhead sewer cost share grant program.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Before we have discussion on that, I think Ms. Reese is going to give us a brief overview of what that is, and it's a result of the extreme flooding that we have had. So, Ms. Reese?
Yes, I'll be, I'll give a brief summary. The town used to have a grant program for an overhead sewer line. This, I'm certainly no plumber, but the program involved installing, working with homeowners to have some plumbing work done, which provides some sewer backup relief and minimizes the risk of sewer backups. In the past, this program was utilized by property owners who had a little bit more frequent experience with this terrible situation. Sewer backup, any kind of water damage to a home is awful. Sewer backup is particularly awful. And so, we've asked council to reinstitute this program, and staff will be working with property owners to find out if they have an interest in moving forward and exploring this. If someone is interested, staff will work with the homeowner and we will get, work with them actually to get a plumber, to give an estimate of what the cost would be, and then this program allows a cost share to try to minimize the risk. So, it, we hope that some will take advantage of this and will move forward. We are asking council to authorize a $25,000 start for this program. If we find that it is more popular, then we will come back to you and ask you to amend that dollar amount in the future.
And I think that's the important thing, is that we do have the flexibility to address a need greater than $25,000 if people respond. I think we kind of let the program go into a lapse because people weren't using it, but it's certainly needed now. So, I think it's going to be up to us to decide how that gets funded and how many people we can help with that.
I was remiss, Mayor Kuss, in indicating that individual grant amounts would be up to $5,000, would be our contribution towards the overall plumbing installation.
Ms. Smith?
To provide some context for how much, how many people this 25,000 might help, Ms. Reese had sent an email indicating that she and town staff were at a local function over the weekend and receiving inquiries from people who had some sewer damage. Could you give that count, please?
Yes, at the recent McLean County Emergency Management Association event, which was called the Multi-Agency Resource Center, it was this past Saturday and Sunday, held at Bloomington Junior High School, we did have a table at that event to talk to residents about their experience during the recent flooding event. During that two-day event, town staff spoke with 12 property owners, 12 residents, and, you know, tried to work with them through the process of flooding, and we will get back to these residents and others that we know of that had flooding experience and share this information with them.
And I know of two emails from citizens that have been addressed to the council. So, the count's at 14, but by making this program available, the town will publicize it in case other individuals just were not aware of the possibility that there may be some assistance.
Right.
But so far, we're looking at 14 homes.
Well, actually, we've had 40 claims against the town, of which the 12 folks we talked to this weekend are part of that 40.
And I think it's important to note that not necessarily all 14 people are looking for that sewer backup remediation. There could be other issues. Primarily, the point of gathering this was to get as much information on the damage so that the county could go forward, if they can document $20 million of damage in the county, they can go forward to get additional money from the federal government by having a disaster declared at the federal level. Mr. Nord?
I did want to point out again that we know of at least four shared sanitary and storm sewers in town, which will probably need funding to be able to get those separated again. Hopefully, everybody knows the impact of if you've got storm sewer running in the sanitary sewer, what happens, because it's not a pleasant experience. And my only question for this, I mean, I am supportive of it, I think it's something we need to do, but since it seems like money grows on trees in Normal, where's the funding coming from? I mean, is it coming out of reserves? Is it coming out of where? Because we've asked for other critical projects to be done, and we've been told there's been no funding, so I think it's a serious question, too.
It absolutely is a serious question. I believe the council report indicates in the budget impact that we are requesting $25,000 from the Storm Sewer Reserve Fund, so it'd be unallocated stormwater fund dollars.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item nine is a motion to approve reappointments to the Children's Discovery Museum Foundation Board.
Move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Mr. McCarthy, would you please read the?
I'd be happy to. Appointees? These are reappointments to individuals that are already serving on the Children's Discovery Museum Board. We have Rod Widmer, Rob Widmer. His term would expire on June 30 of 2024. We also have Terry Oganley, I think I got that right, whose term would expire on June 30 of 2024, and Paul Charnett, whose term would also expire on June 30 of 2024.
Mr. Nord?
This is something where the appointments are coming to us to approve, but the public has not been made aware, so they've not been, or they have not been made aware who is being appointed, so they don't have an opportunity to provide us public comment. So, I'm just not in favor of making decisions without letting the public speak to us. Nothing against the people. I've said this pretty much every time we've had appointments, and at some point, I'd like to see us notify the public when the council packet goes out, so they've got the opportunity to talk to us.
Well, I'll be very clear, Mr. Nord, that's not going to happen. This is a mayor's appointment and a ratification by the council, and so that's the process.
And I would just like to say that in the city of Bloomington, that process is different. It's open and welcoming of public comment, and ours is not.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye. The motion is approved. We have one general public comment tonight, and that is from Janine McBurney.
She's been here all night.
Ms. McBurney, just as a reminder, the rules are the same. Please state your name for the public record, and you have three minutes of comment.
Hi, my name is Janine McBurney. I just moved here not quite four months ago. I have never had to go to a city council. This is all new to me, so I hope you'll understand. If I'm doing something wrong, just point it out. Well, I started, moved here, and the traffic on Fort Jesse Road between Veterans and Hershey's is like living on I-55. There is a total disregard of that 30 mile an hour speed limit. It is 50 to 60 miles an hour. It is semis, it is dump trucks, it is connect transit buses, it is everyone. I have been to the police station numerous times and even bought them donuts, because I call them almost every day. So, they set out the speed trailer out there a few times. I tried to get the results. They had one there the end of June, or the middle of June. I tried to get the results. The officer, the lady at the front desk said, oh, I'll have an officer call you, but I have never heard from them. So, then the police said, well, try the city engineer, maybe he can do something. So, I went to Mr. Otto's office, and I had a conversation with him, and he said that they're working on something on that street, but down by Greenbrier, where all the Walmart traffic is coming out, that they were thinking of putting a stoplight there. Well, that's not going to help the rest of Fort Jesse in the least. So, then I went back to the police station again, and they said, well, try the city council, maybe they can help you. So, I have sent all of you an email about three weeks ago. The mayor said, well, the Neighborhood Action Committee, they can help you, we'll talk to you soon. Then Mr. McCarthy sent me a letter, I'm going to follow up with the mayor to see that this gets done. Well, I have heard from nobody. This isn't going to cost a million dollars. Do we need to turn this section road back into a two-lane street so people can park in front of their houses? That could work. Can we put a roundabout at Susan? Well, that slows this traffic down. Can we put a weight limit on the street so semis and dump trucks can't come down here? We cannot sit on our patio, we cannot sit on our front porch. Our house vibrates when these big trucks go by our house. I am at a loss. If you give me a direction, I'll hold up picket signs, I will supply all my neighbors with signs, slow down, slow down. I've talked to everybody about this. They said, you're wasting your time. Nobody is going to do anything about this. My neighbor across the street, she's lived there 15 years, she said they used to come and patrol it, and things weren't so bad. She says for the last five, six years, nobody does anything, and she wouldn't even come with me tonight. She said, you're wasting your time. And I'm thinking, this is a nice town, I just moved here, I go to the art, I go play pickleball, it's a great community, I love it here. Am I going to have to move? I'm too old, I can't do it again. But somebody gives me a direction, I don't know if you can talk to me, if you can tell me what to do, I will do anything to get the people to respect that 30 mile an hour speed limit. These are houses on this street, what is going on? You're talking all this safety with these underground things, well, this isn't going to cost millions of dollars to fix. It's going to take a few, few people to talk to the right people, the police, do we need a, I don't know what we need. I've never run into this, I've lived probably in 10 houses in my life, I drive all over, but I have never seen anything like this in my life, and I'm old. So, this is saying something, I think. So, if somebody can help me, I would truly appreciate it. Tell me what to do, I will work, I will go door to door, whatever it will take, I will, I'm there for you, proud, I'm here to support this town. So, if somebody can help me, I would truly appreciate it. And when you tell me you're going to contact me soon, soon to me is a few days to a week, not three weeks, six months, two years. I'm a timely person, and that's what I like to do. So, if somebody can help me, I appreciate it. If you need my email or phone number, I'll be glad to, you know, do whatever, but I think you all have my email address, but if you need it again, I'm here, so help.
We generally don't go back and forth on comments here, but I will note that Ms. Reese was taking copious notes, and you're likely going to hear from us soon.
Okay, make sure it's not six months from now, though, because I'll be back in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Can I just, Mr. Mayor, may I just thank her for hanging in there for this long meeting and being so cheerful with your feedback? Thank you.
I just took a different week.
Yeah. Thank you.
Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments? Mr. Nord?
I just have a couple of comments for the speaker, or on behalf of the speaker. I don't understand why the police wouldn't be able to share the speeding results. So, if that's something that cannot be FOIA-able for some reason and released to the public, actually, I'm going to make the request. Could I get that in a fashion that then I can forward it out to the public, because she deserves to know it, and I don't know what information would be on there that would not be relevant to give to the public? And as far as speed enforcement, you know, this is the role of our police force, is to do that. There has been a complaint that we've all seen about the police going out into neighborhoods and enforcing, say, appearance ordinances, you know, they're just not, they're not even knocking on the door, just drive by, see a car maybe parked under a tree that somebody may have been waxing or in the grass, and giving them a ticket. Rather than doing that, and not even knocking on the door and letting people know, hey, you know, you're violating this ordinance, rather than doing that, I would rather see the resources of the police department enforce speeding in areas where our citizens have said there's a problem. I know you can't be everywhere, police, but if the citizens call, please try and focus on that, because that's what we're all here for. So, thank you, and I apologize you had to wait till the end of the meeting. You know, if you were in Bloomington, you could talk at the beginning and then go on your way, but thank you.
Mayor Kuss, if I could just respond briefly. Appearance tickets, I think, Mr. Nord, you're referencing the ticket recently issued to someone because they parked in their grass off their driveway, and we gave them a parking ticket, is that the one you're referencing?
Yes, they parked so a moving van could park in their driveway, and they didn't have a drive big enough, and it was out for less than an hour.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the timeline, but I do know that people aren't permitted to park in their grass, and there were actually other options in that particular instance. I think we covered that by some email exchanges, and I included council on that. Just in regard to the speed trailer, Ms. McBurney might not even be aware of this, but I just emailed her at the end of the day today with the information. So, we have some basic information that I was able to pull and sent it off, and we'll maintain that communication with her. The only other thing I wanted to mention, not related to speeding on Fort Jesse Road, but I did want to congratulate the Normal Police Department for getting re-accredited through the CLIA accreditation process. So, this makes year, how many process? I'm sorry, what?
Since 1994, I think it's our ninth reaccreditation.
Right, our ninth reaccreditation through Right, our ninth reaccreditation through the Commission, well, CALIA, Commission for the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies. So congratulations to Chief Bleisner and the entire Normal Police Department team. So that's a major accomplishment.
My hearing's not so good. I thought you said before you were born. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Cummings?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Mayor Kuss?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Put me on your calendar to talk about master plan and cabs and community engagement.